Yeah.
All right, I would like to welcome everyone to the Abson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October eighth. Like to call the meeting to order. No indication for today. Okay, if you please stand.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mistletoe with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Seeing none. Approval of the minutes. Did you guys have an opportunity to read the minutes from Tuesday, October first? If so, I look for a motion to approve.
So sorry.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, Mr. Chair comments, Commissioner Rivas?
I don't think I have anything today. Okay, I don't have anything either.
Okay, I also do not have any comments today. For new business, I do have two purchase orders that I would like to review. I have one solid waste directors here. And she has one to present to us for Murphy Tractor and Equipment in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents. This was the repairs to her twenty sixteen John Deere backhoe. New EGR valve and exhaust throttle. If you guys have any questions for her, otherwise I'd look for a motion to approve as presented.
So second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I was gonna put that in here to be.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. And I have another purchase order. This is out of the County General Fund to be paid to Troyer Roofing in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is the replacement of damaged shingles on the courthouse roof. The storm damage claim went through K Camp and the insurance fund, we have the insurance funds to pay. So do I have a motion to approve this purchase order?
So move. Sorry.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Three to zero. Next, I have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director with the Risk Management and Insurance bid opening for twenty twenty-five insurance year.
Okay, so we received two bids. One is from company called Insurance Planning, out of Hayes. And the other bid was from K Camp, which we currently have. The bids are for insurance in twenty twenty-five. And I have them via electronic. They have not been opened. I don't know anything about them, so we'll open them now. I'm gonna go in order in which they were received, so there's a gentleman by Cody, Catherine is here. And so if he wants to come up and talk any first. And then we can open the bed if you want to do that.
Thank you guys. Take your free time.
We have, we submitted this to a company called Midwest Public Risk. Similar, similar to the pool that you're in now. They've, they function out of Missouri. And in Kansas, they do have a board of directors, ten elected officials from the municipalities that are in their in their pools, so. We have, it is set up a little bit different than what K Camp does, it is a seven-one renewal. So we do have a short-term pro-rated quote to get to seven-one, and then the new policy would come into effect then. Think that's all I have, do you guys have any questions?
What's your quote for the following year, is there an estimate for that year?
So the, the current quote, since the policy ends on one-one, we have a quote that'll go from one-one to six-thirty. And then on seven-one, your first full annual term will start. The really nice thing with these guys is they did lock in the property rate. So the property rate you have one-one this year, you'll have until the end of twenty-six.
Okay.
Or the, no.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, yeah. So.
Okay.
Yes.
Six thirty of twenty-six?
Six thirty of twenty-six.
Okay. Okay, so it is encompassed a full year.
Yeah, so you get the first six months at that rate. And then the next twelve are gonna be, they, they, they will not change it unless you add property or it'll, it'll in- increase equally, so.
What do you call that fiscal year start is seven-one?
Seven-one, yeah.
So that'd be your fiscal year.
Yeah.
So when would those your renewal quotes be, I, I'm thinking of our budget season, when would they be submitted like a month before that or?
Typically sixty to ninety days is what we push for. To give everybody enough time to.
You know, I'm just trying to envision what that looks like because if it was at the wrong time, we wouldn't know.
If, if, if it would be a substantial increase, you know, we would want enough heads up, which we communicate with carriers very well. And you know, when they come in and we, they say, you know, you're looking at ten percent this year, looking at fifteen. We try to get out in front of that to make sure that you guys have time to have discussions about budget. To appropriate, take, take care of that, so.
So it's an annual premium or is it?
So this, they, they, they've provided a pro-rated one, this is just your, your contribution for six months.
Okay. Typically, is it an annual premium or?
Yes. Yeah.
Obviously, with budget-wise, it was quarterly or six months, it'd be different.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the nice part about this is you have, you do have the eighteen months that you're locked into those.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions?
What other counties or that in Kansas do you service?
I service a majority of cities.
Okay.
I, I service a lot of cities in Western Kansas. K Camp or, sorry, Midwest Public Risk actually writes the city pays.
Okay.
And the nice part about that is, is Kim Rupp, one of our city officials, is sitting on Midwest Public Risk Board, so we have a little bit of a, of a closer connection that if there's some kind of change or some kind of issue that skill I have that we should be able to get something done in a pretty quick amount of time, so.
And how long has your company been around?
Insurance Planning's been around since nineteen sixty-eight. We have about fifty employees in our building. We're kind of a hidden gem out there in Western Kansas, it, it looks small, but it's, but it's all over, so.
Where are you based?
Out of Hayes.
Okay.
Nice. Any other questions or?
So this bid for six months is one hundred and seventy-one thousand eight sixty-four.
And there's also a cyber liability policy that will go with that. Four thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars for the first six months.
On top of that?
Yeah, and that's with a company called Gallagher. What's your work comp, I believe, Mark said is, is, is what, so. And then I do have some coverage breakdowns for all of you guys. Us compared to K Camp. They offer just a little bit lower liability limits than what we offer, of course, you guys are subject to the Kansas Claims Act, so should they not fall inside that Kansas torts claim act? They have six million dollar limits instead of three million dollar.
And so we did, will both companies be physically reset?
That's enough.
No.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna wait and ask careers when you were done.
Double.
Okay, so with you saying that that rate would be locked until six-thirty of twenty-six, if we would take this and double it, that would be our annual premium, okay?
As long as no changes are made.
As long, but that's what we're bidding right now, so, okay, I just wanna make sure when we're the next one, we're comparing apples to apples as far as like, okay, here's, yeah.
Yep.
So. Just to be clear, so.
Yeah, three forty-three.
Three forty-three, seventy, seventy, seven twenty-eight, I apologize.
So it'd be three fifty-three, fifty-six with the cybersecurity, right?
If you did the full term with the cyber, it would be nine thousand and sixty-four dollars.
Cause that cyber is only for six months, what we quoted you.
So if I put those two together.
Right, and then times two.
So, okay, so three fifty-three, fifty-six. Annual. Okay.
And then like in the email that I provided to you about how the plan for today would go, as we hear from both. We take time to review both proposals, make sure it's adequately what you guys wanna do. Take a couple of weeks, review it, and then make the decision.
Okay.
So I, I came in contact with Mark through your guys at Senior Village.
Okay.
I think it was about this time last year that we got connected and Mark expressed that you guys were having some difficulties finding coverage for that and I actually received an email from your previous agent. Cause she didn't feel like she could do anything, so. We, I think in a pretty short timeframe, provided that quote to help keep Senior Village open. And obviously we'll lose that this year, but
Yeah.
I mean, it was always nice to establish that relationship and help you guys out, so.
You guys have any other questions for Cody?
I don't think so right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one is K Camp. Thanks, so, Mr. David, look, you wanna come on up?
Sure. So do you have those yet?
I don't, I will get them printed unless you have copies you wanna provide.
Yeah, we just.
That's good, I can get them.
Yeah. Cheers, sir. I get to take care.
And that's right.
It reclined. Well, so, yeah, we, we put together a proposal that kinda outlines for you kind of the history, so you've been with us for twenty-two years. And we did outline some of the, the credits, dividends, grants, awards that we've given back over the last few years, since two thousand twelve, it was almost forty thousand rate stabilization credits, dividends. But just under twenty-four thousand of risk avoidance grants. Forty-one thousand four forty-nine of risk management achievement awards and twelve hundred dollars for loss ratio awards. So totaled about a hundred and five, almost a hundred and six thousand dollars back to in those forms since two thousand twelve, which is about eighty-one fifty of your return to contribution annually. So, and a lot of that is due to the risk management efforts the county puts in, so. Let's see, the, the numbers go down this year for a couple of reasons, one you went from historical reproduction costs to replacement costs, so that saves you several, you know, thousands of dollars. You and then the nursing home, of course, coming off, it's very substantial. So those two things, was there a third? I'm trying to think. But those were the two biggest, I would say, that led to to the reduction, obviously.
And your, and your losses were a lot better.
You had.
In this, in this four-year period of time than.
You had a bad year drop off and a good year come on, basically, yeah, so those three, those are the three reasons that that really helped this year. So the quote is for so for all the coverages, property liability, cybercrime, all our in-house claim handling, all the risk management services that we've talked about before is two fifty-eight, seven, seven, four.
Down substantially from what we paid this year.
Yes. So it's about a sixteen percent decrease.
And that decrease because?
So you, you went for re- reproduction costs on two buildings, right?
We knew that.
Replacement.
Which is great.
That's a huge help, and then you took the nursing home off, which was substantial.
So will the lightning strike hurt us, do you believe?
No.
Cause we did have a claim, you know, recently on that.
We don't experience rate the property.
Okay.
And that's kinda why, cause you can't really control the lightning strike.
No, absolutely, I was just curious.
We do experience rate some lines like auto, that we do experience rate public officials now, the thought being, you know, you had a bad supervisor in there, right, and every year it's leading to claims. You know, at some point we have to account for that, so we experience rate some lines, but, yeah, not properly. So, yeah, a lot of, a big reduction in your exposure base, that which is what we rate off of. And then an improvement in the loss picture because of one year, one bad year dropping off and the good year coming on. Now that we affect this estimate, but what else is there out there that we could do differently that would lower it even more, I mean, is there anything else strategies wise that we could be looking at? No, I mean, you have a really active staff, whether it's Michelle or HR or Mark, I mean, really have been doing a lot in terms of applying for the risk management achievement awards, you're always applying for the, the risk avoidance grant. We've come in and done trainings, I mean, but this is a really proactive county, so. Good to hear, yeah, it's very impressive.
You can also increase your deductibles. Right, but you have to kinda figure
Yeah.
what, what you would save on the, on the contribution versus what you're gonna pay out.
Right.
In, in the losses, and sometimes it's a it's the wash.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you're creating dollars.
You, you can take your historical, you know, you could say, well, you know, Bob, give us a quote if we go to whatever, let's just say a twenty-five thousand wind hail or fifty thousand. And then just look at your ten-year history and say, well, how many eight times have we had a wind hail loss of that amount, and maybe a budget for that.
Yeah, you can always, you, you can always put it, put it in a savings plan, you know, so we're saving you know, ten thousand dollars a year on our, on our contribution, put that in a fund so that eventually if you do have a, a wind, wind loss to the courthouse or something, then you have some money to, to, to pay for, cause that's what you're, you know, you're self retaining some of that exposure.
And there are some counties that have done that, so Ellis County, for example, or Hazens, they, they went to a fifty thousand, and that was at their request, you know, we, we quoted it twenty-five and fifty, and they decided to go up to fifty, so it's just a, you know, preference. What your risk appetite is. Well, it's a little different, you know, when you're risking not your own money, but, you know, the county money, taxpayers' money, it's just can't do what you would maybe do for your own personal use, do.
But I, I think that the whole of the risk services that we provide, I think you know, keep emphasizing those, cause that ultimately keeps your losses down. Saves you money on the deductibles, saves K Camp and the rest of the pool money on the expenditures, but over, over the period of time. Again, it's because of, of the controls that you've put in place that the loss ratio has gone down and you've benefited from the from that because of the experience rating. And if you could keep that up, it just, you know, I can't say it'll go down sixteen percent every year, but it'll keep you keep it flatter than, than a county that has issues that they haven't corrected. And it's, it's just a matter of, you know, trading, trading exposure, trading claims. You have a beautiful building here, by the way. Fairly new resident Kansas now, going around at all the counties and seeing the beautiful courthouses. Of course, it's, they're expensive and.
Impractical and inefficient, but they're, but they're beautiful.
You know? I don't have to live them, but they're really nice.
Okay, you guys have any other questions for these guys?
Oh, do you have any good benchmarks, let's say we would decide to do an insurance reserve fund and develop that over time, then go to higher deductibles, is there any good rule of thumb or any give back on this later if you want, but just a good examples, what would be an ideal number to have in that fund to make a difference? That's a great question, yeah, I think probably what we would do or recommend is, is take your historical and then apply some factors to it to kinda project to what, you know, looking forward. You know, again, like Bob has said, you know, past, as I always say, you know, past history isn't, isn't indicative of what's gonna happen to the future, but it's a pretty good judgment or gauge, so we could we could help with that, looking at your historical losses and then applying some kinda development factor and saying, okay, going forward, you might wanna expect this, this amount of loss on an average annual basis. Strategy, look at long-term. Sitting on some cashes, it is a part that's designated, is that maybe, that's a way to look at it too, I don't know, we'll dig into that more, but just, just for long-term planning, and I'll be going, but pledge of planning for next year, I mean, I think it'd be a good strategy to know more about. Sure.
You had mentioned looking at contributions into a fund, is that something through K Camp?
No, that's what you would do.
That's, so we have authority like to do that.
Whatever, whatever.
Where are contributions going right now, just against the general? Okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so and, and, and we can break it down also, and I've done this for some counties, is breaking it down by department as well. As to, okay, road and bridges, this is where you're, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is where you have your expenses. What, what it would mean on terms of mobile equipment and auto, so we could break it down a little finer so that you can kinda plan and say, may, maybe we wanna not forego the wind hail deductible on the building, but we'll go to a five thousand dollar deductible on the on the, on the vehicles and the mobile equipment, and that'll save us X and
Right.
we're already paying another, you know, from a, from a physical damage perspective, we apply one one deductible regardless of the number of, of vehicles that you have involved or mobile equipment, so if you have, you know, five involved, you're still only gonna be paying that twenty-five hundred, so to go to five thousand dollar on that, you're gonna spend another twenty-five hundred, but you're gonna save some on the contribution that probably offset whatever that is, but we can work some numbers for you. And, and kinda give you a thought, and then as David said, it's all, all about how much risk you wanna take and, and, you know, and how much you, you know, you have better figure of your numbers on your daily costs and, and what, 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 what you could afford.
Okay. We'll get information going forward, I think. The, he mentioned the liability limits are lower, I think i- if they haven't changed their program, they, they used to provide three and a half million of liability limits. Ours is three million, but we provide the five hundred thousand dollar defense cost outside of the limit. So it, to me, that would be kind of a comparable limit. And the reason is, you know, we put it outside, just so your defense costs are not eroding the remaining limit. But three and a half within inside is essentially to me the same, so. And then the other thing to consider is, I, you know, I don't couple of things, one is claims handling. Ours is in-house, so you know the folks that, that handle your claims day to day, I believe they contract out with the TPA and and I don't know who that is and how their claim handling is, so that's something to consider. And then lastly, I've never quite understood the financials of that pool, so it's a Missouri pool that decided to come into Kansas and do some business. Who's backing up the Kansas losses and are you sharing risk with Missouri entities? Because Missouri has a quite different tort environment than Kansas does. You know, our claims values, you know, our torque cap is more significant and our claim values tend to be much lower. And so you go into a Missouri pool, who is that a separate financial bucket and, and you're just backed up by the Kansas pool of members, or are you sharing risk with another state entity, you know, that's something to consider too. So, and I don't know the answer, I'm just saying, I think that would be an important question to ask if you were gonna seriously consider that program.
Right, that's good, thank you.
Thank you for your time, and just email us with questions. Definitely, we will, all right. Nice to see you. Good to see you guys, yeah. Thank you, David.
Next, we have a good sign of road and bridges superintendent, culverts for Ottawa Road Phase One Rehabilitation K dot project bid opening. And department update.
Good morning. We have a bid opening for K dot Project C, five, three, oh, nine, oh, one. Phase one, we as a group decided to go ahead and do the culverts before we did the road rehabilitation, so we'd have a chance to get those done and, and hopefully the settling before the project for the whole road started, just so if anybody listening wants to know. So the first bid. How many do you have, just two? Well, two. Three. Four. Five, but one of them may be, one of them may be is a duplicate. There was a denim that went out and they'd already mailed their bid, they're just notifying us that they're aware of that. So the first one. These, these culverts can be, some of them are aluminized, galvanized, and some of the is concrete, so I don't know, when we sent the invitation, the bid out, we contacted as many people as we knew. And some of them may just be for the concrete section of it, and some of it may be all, or some of it may just be for the aluminized, galvanized part. Does everybody understand that? The first one is from Old Castle Infrastructure in Topeka. And their bid is for the reinforced concrete pipe twenty-four inch, eight foot reinforced concrete pipe twenty-four inch and two reinforced concrete twenty-four inch bell. So their total bid for the concrete portion of it only is two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. Twenty-eight, oh, eight, oh, eight. Yes. I'm gonna hand these to back one is from Wellborn Sales. Out of Salad.
And do that is the function of this receipt.
Okay. So. Is this the second one? This one's from Paul Plan, so that's the.
No, I think it's that one.
Okay. All right, so this is from the same company. We sent out an addendum before it was complete. And their bid is exactly the same, they're just acknowledging that's a the, the addendum, yes. And it's, this is for everything, this is for the concrete pipe and the crossroad pipes, it's one hundred and fifty-six thousand. Four hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty cents.
Did they break down the concrete?
So the concrete. Is twenty six sixty point eight zero. This bit is from Metal Culverts. Out of Jefferson City, Missouri, their plant we use is out of Maryville, Missouri. Okay, so they did not bid the concrete. Portion. Their bid and they did not, yes, no concrete. Their bid is one hundred and thirty six thousand. Five hundred and eighty two. Dollars at ninety five cents.
Do they break down the illuminizing galvanize?
They have the illuminizing galvanize, but they do not have the.
Can you give us a breakdown of those versus Willborn?
This is. Wellborn.
Yes.
You're handing back. Just so we keep.
Yes. Okay. So there was, there was another part of the concrete on Wellborn that I missed is four thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars.
That's an additional?
Yes. They had twenty six sixty point eighty. Plus four thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars. And on those two, that's line item number one and five. There was no bid at all from Metal Culverts now. The crossroad pipe twenty five square feet AS ACS MAC. Quantity forty five length. For Wellborn is thirteen thousand three hundred and forty eight dollars. And Metal Culverts. Is nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars and seventy five cents. The. Crossroad pipe ninety point three square feet Kappa. Is. Wellborn is sixty seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And Metal Culverts is fifty eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Fifty eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. And the next one's exactly, exactly the same. Prices Wellborn is sixty seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And. Metal Culverts. Is fifty eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Any question about any of those? I don't think I'll leave these here in case the last one. This is from Contact Engineered Solutions. Lawrence. And. They only bid the. Twenty five square foot crossroad pipe ACS MAC. At. Forty three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and thirty cents. And the other bids were nineteen thousand and thirteen thousand.
What's the total on this again?
Forty three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and thirty cents. Yep, that's a huge difference there.
We're gonna have to dig through those now.
Yeah, we're gonna have to sit down and and go through everything.
Or.
Or just the envelopes for Wellborn.
Right.
There isn't anything in that orange folder.
No, that's what everything was put in.
So can you check that set one underneath there? The bottom one? Okay.
I pulled an envelope out about that one. So, we will sit down and we will go over these and uh. Come back and talk to you guys with uh what we have. And move forward with that.
Maybe next week.
Yes. Then uh. I have a. Right away permit application. And I wanted to show you, I actually do have the map that goes with it, and it shows his. Two driveways. See where the. And he is willing to replace. One culvert and then. Asphalt his driveways.
Look for a motion to approve the Acheson County right away permit application for Phil Burkinsay. Uh he will be replacing existing tube with sixteen gauge corrugated and installed four inches. Of.
Hot mixed asphalt is what I need to raise.
Hot mixed asphalt. Um. And he's doing this because gravel's continually washing on the country club road, so he's gonna prevent that from occurring. Um of a motion to approve.
Oh. I'll I'll make the motion, but I want a discussion.
Yes, I can.
Um so on that, is there? Is he fully aware that if they tore tear that up, I mean, is this?
I explained that to him yesterday, but when we can write that down. Uh on the application, if you'd like, but.
I would I would like that to be. Like a signature or something that he understands that, so we don't run into a problem. Ten years from now and, well, they didn't tell me that.
So when you send this back to them, do you send it in an email?
Uh, yes.
Because you could just conclude our policy that states that. In the event the county where there's damage. That.
We went over that with him in the.
But just have it. I think to your.
In the office the other day, so.
I'm, but. I guess my question is, is there anything that would say ten years, maybe he sells the property and then they come back and then they're going like, well, you. Now you replace this and you've. There's asphalt there and we want you to pay for this.
Well, I just, I don't know, the policy. Kind of states that, so I'll do whatever you guys ask, but the road policy does state that, that if. There's anything that's to be done.
Probably more about, how do we know that thirty years from now? So. Are your culvert mapping, are there footnotes about each culvert?
Well, we haven't got into the driveway culvert yet.
Okay, but obviously, is there is there some place where you say?
We do it, it would be right here in the.
Which instead of us writing scratch notes, I think including this, like, so that it's the policy.
Yeah.
Um would be a better.
Yeah, I just wanna avoid.
So what do you want me to do then? Do you want me to have him sign it? Or just put that?
Needs to be referenced somewhere. Where. Three three superintendents from now and years from now, I'm gonna say.
Well, no, we we can do that and I can include that in the. In the file, we save all of these, every one of them.
And so. The file, is it by?
It says there.
It says right here, guys, on relocation, in the event the county seems necessary to make. Alterations or improvements, the applicant shall at its own expense. Remove, relocate, accommodate to conform to such improvements directed by the county.
Alright, feel good.
Okay, okay. So, but no, we do, we do save all of.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three zero.
I have the uh. PO. For straight line striping. For the striping of the. The roads this year. It is. A thirty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents. And while we're talking about this, I do wanna mention. Uh I've had a lot of positive feedback. And I did get asked. Why we didn't go through the city limits of Effingham the whole way. Because this or these are older people who will come off of like one fifty nine. And, you know, we chose just to do. Not to do in town, but they did part of it anyhow, where they come off of one fifty nine and come by. The uh.
They have armed and.
Yeah. Here they are, they've got stripes and they come off and then there's no stripes. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that that has been brought to my attention, but most everything's been positive feedback, although other.
Let's have a decision for next year's scrapping, if it's worth doing that.
Yeah, it's just.
We base it on speed limit.
Yeah, we base it on speed limit and he and he did. Part of it that we weren't expecting him to, so, but I just just wanna let you know what I hear, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so I look for a motion to approve the purchase order for striping out of the road and bridge um. Budget. For to straight line striping. For fifteen hundred and seventy gallons of white paint for striping on Ottawa Road, Osborne Road, Edwards Road, two sixty second, Decatur, two fifty fourth, Bourbon and Cheyenne. And the amount of thirty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents, so I'm motion feelproof.
So. Same.
Move to second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes, we just zero.
That's an amazing amount of paint.
Well, when you, when you uh. The chip and seal so it's a more point, it takes more paint than like your. Your uh asphalt or like your. Micro seal and he has to increase that to make sure that it's what it needs to be as he's spraying.
It's kind of filler and paint, it's probably.
I have a question on that that company, so do we do prep work as far as sweeping or do these folks do it?
But. There was something painted over that uh. We'll address next year, there was an animal that got painted over, but we do the, we do the, we do this de-brooming. But I believe what I would like to do from now on is wait one year after we do the chip and seal to paint. Because with the road.
Then broom it right before they show.
Yes, because what happened, I noticed it for this year. Is the traffic came in and did it on weekend. And we broomed it on Thursday, and with some of the traffic, some of the looseness. The loose stuff moved out to the edge and it's not. Not like Iowa would like it to be, but everything that had been done before. Looks absolutely great. So. So like next year, what I have budgeted, we have some roads we haven't done, then we will stripe those and then the following year. We will do the ones that we did. That year, that's just my opinion from what I saw this year.
You did it full year or just do you need a little more time, a couple of months?
I'd like to wait. I'd like to wait.
Okay.
Because we're normally, of course, this year will be done. Uh hopefully sooner, because there's, you know, a third of the miles, so. Is that what you were concerned and you'd seen that?
Well, no, I just had been asked about the brooming situation and I didn't know. If when they come in, because sometimes it's seamless, right? Like, hey, do it right before you do it.
No.
Um if they did it or if we were doing it.
No, we did it, we went out uh Wednesday and uh. And then then there's some discussion, I've asked to to move the lines in a little bit further, because our roads. Uh when we broom that stuff off, it appears to be asphalt there, but it's not necessarily. So uh, I wanna try to get that better. Have a better product in the end. So I'll take that. As uh I would like to either wait, or if we get done in June this year. If it works, then he doesn't come till. August or September, maybe that will give us more time.
Yeah, that makes more sense, yeah.
But not just as soon as we done.
So then when we're budgeting, because we had. Began budgeting our hard surface roads and having the painting right in there. But you're saying. Moving forward, it'll be like we hard surface. Correct them with chip and seal, and then the following year, those will get striped.
Right.
Okay.
But if we're only doing seven, seven miles, which is what we're cut back to, if we can get that done earlier than the year. He strikes in September, first of October, we may have more time to. To get that taken care of, because I did.
Winter time coming.
Yeah, and I did include some striping for next year, you know, means we're kind of changing how we're doing things for some of the roads that haven't had it yet. So I budgeted for more than seven miles, so. If that makes sense, and we can get those roads.
Kind of catch up to.
Yeah, so like we have Sedwick Road and we have. Uh the old highway fifty nine, all of those roads. Uh they're not looking that bad, we'll just have him hold the, hold the lines in a little bit from the edge and paint them. But I did budget to try to get. What we haven't gotten done, done. If at all possible. So I have one more thing, you haven't.
She's on her way.
She's on her way.
On her way down there, she's gonna have it in just a moment.
So the urban. Area boundaries for the city of Acheson, they have to have a signed resolution. That. The one of the commissioners or when it gets here, we'll be able to explain it, he's to sign, so they can send it into functional classification. And we're trying to get that here today. Uh so that can be taken care of, then they have to. Uh. I talked to Kevin yesterday and. And I should have printed off, and maybe we can print off, can we, can you print off four of those? It's easier to read that than for me to try to explain how all of this works. So on our functional classification, there's gonna end up being probably two changes, one other county didn't agree with what we had done and the. It went into the other county. And then I looked at something and I changed one back to the way it was, but the rest of it should be the same. We have to wait for the city, you know, you'd brought this up earlier. When we first started talking about functional classification, how soon we need to get it done, well, the city's supposed to be done first. And then us, so once they do this resolution, then they go through and they look at our. Their roads, and if there's anything that we need to talk about, then I will meet with them and we'll try to get it.
With the city.
With the city.
But we already have.
We proved ours. But but we have two changes that are gonna come up when everything is done.
Based on working with the surrounding counties.
Yes, so uh if you read this.
More after you work with the city, if they have.
Yes, yes.
Locked on this.
Yes. So this just kind of explains. How this works with the with the city. And I don't have a, actually have a copy of the map here, but. So their area grew a little bit from what it was. The last time, but the way it sounds that they had kind of been like we had, and it'd been a long, long time. Since, you know, ours was what nineteen eighty four or five since we have done this.
So what does that mean, the city's area grew?
So that's that's what's supposed to be in here, so. It it allows, if the city was were to grow and there would be developments. Within the new boundary. Then they would have, that's why I'm trying, I'm trying to explain this. It would have to do with what they justify their roads. I mean, I don't know how to explain it.
The the urban area boundaries, not the city limits, it's.
No.
Impacted by growth.
Yes, there, you're you're explaining it a lot better than.
So what's going on, it's like it's trying to just anticipate where.
For the next ten years.
Like, for example. Burkeville wasn't there years ago and now is there another adding to it, so I guess that's what you're saying.
Yeah, so like for the next ten years, they try to, they try to guess for like ten years, if there's gonna be urban growth. And then that would move their boundaries out, it doesn't mean that it's the city limits.
Anticipating impact.
But then like if we have uh. Like with how the city works with us within three miles of. This of the zone, you know. It it kind of controls, it says they're just trying to guess.
Yeah.
So does it have anything to do with road responsibility?
I don't, I don't really think so much road responsibility.
It's anticipating where roads are gonna be and. Maybe. Wide and enlarged and more traffic.
More traffic would be, you know, like if you put a housing project in.
It probably, it probably relates to their strategic plan down there that we have to always do it down there and you always project out the areas outside of the city, how it's gonna be impacted.
And that's why I had him to try to. Explain it, because it's hard for me to explain.
So it's pretty easy to predict like the fifty nine corridor or the seventy three corridor, they they'd be more likely to have growth, I mean, there's things like that, I think it's gonna. We're not growing eaves at all.
Thank you. So this is first just the resolution that the city signed.
That would be the part one.
Yes. So. And I'll show this right now. So the gray area. Is the old urban boundary. And the orange dotted line would be the new. Urban area boundary. And that's just for anticipating growth.
And that's in the city's strategic plan that they're anticipating their.
Well, this is, this is what functional classification is. Giving is what they think would be their growth.
But the city's under resolution, so they're agreeing with it.
Probably with your planning commission, it just matters. It usually gives us a guess.
Above stated, city is required to determine and submit for approval the location of the urban area boundary lines for said city. Be it therefore resolved that in compliance with this requirement. In cooperation with local county officials, this signed document accompanied by a signed. Copy of map of said city indicating the proposal. Location in the urban area boundary lines is hereby submitted for review and approval.
And so we're just supporting the city, basically?
Basically, we have to agree. It's basically concurring.
Yeah. Just being informed of.
Yes, yes, and then when they, and as it says. Location said city indicating the proposed locations of urban area boundary. Lines is submitted for review and approval. It's kind of like what we did, but we're just. Concurring that the city is doing the same thing and that when we get together. And that needs to be. Signed by a county official and me and Michelle, so.
Okay.
It was kind of confusing. Especially when none of us have ever been.
It feels better than that they've already acknowledged that they're good.
The group may not happen there at all. It may happen.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a guess, so.
Okay.
Well, part of the, part of the reasoning behind this is where it makes the most sense, where you could extend sewer and water, where you could. Growth is likely to happen.
So they, they signed off on this in August. There's nowhere to put a date. Does it matter that it's October for?
Well, I would just go ahead and put the. You can put your date right beside it if you want to.
Okay. Um.
Yeah.
This at all.
Do you have any really questions before I call for a motion?
Hmm, I don't know. I just.
Okay.
I'm not, uh. It's just kind of, yeah, it's, I just haven't wrapped my brain around the whole thing yet, I guess. Just what? This whole thing was brought. From KDOT that's there.
Yeah, functional classification. So in two thousand and ten, this was done automatically without anybody signing it. And I honestly believe it was like nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five was the last time we found where the county commissioners had signed. Any of this and that may have been at the inception of it. I don't know for sure. So we went through and you know, they had. Twenty different changes to our roads. Well, then we went through and we sorted them out. And uh the city had to sign this. And it's been sent into the city because they didn't know where to go with it. And finally, they got hold of Michelle. I sent a copy of that to functional classification to make sure everything is like it was supposed to be. It is, and then we're getting it here to get it signed so we can go back to functional classification. So they can move forward with the city's part.
Which with or without our blessing, they're gonna be able to move forward.
Well, we we have to, yeah, we need to, we need to uh have their blessings. I mean, it's all county city.
No, absolutely.
And they're gonna go through some of the same things we did. We've never done this before. It's new to us and the guy doing the program, it was new to him also, so. Like there's some learning as this goes on.
Going forward, they anticipated, they indicated they're gonna do this like in a more.
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Because they projected, what I read was like for ten years, they did it in twenty-ten.
So what is the purpose of this though? Like I'm just asking, so is it, so if we write a grant to KDOT, right? And then we say, well, we've told you three years ago that we're expanding this way, so we need. Like I guess, what's the purpose to hold?
Nailing the hit. It's like, you know, hey, we need to widen this highway because growth's going that way and the traffic count's going up or whatever.
It's just informing all parties.
It's starting to be acknowledged by the city, the county and KDOT.
Right, and then like ours, a lot of ours, like the major collectors. You know, they're gonna be between state highways. You know, or US highways and then it has to do with funding. Uh major collectors, if there's a, an event like FEMA. It goes through the state of Kansas. A minor collectors in the local roads goes through FEMA. So but it's basically, I changed Finney Road back to a minor collector because it goes from. Two eighty-six to three twenty-six to majors. So we need to have some of those routes. In there and then also when we are strategically bridge planning. We need to look at some of that, say, okay, this is a, for us, it's a minor arterial or a major arterial. Do we need to replace some bridges so these people can get that straight through?
Yeah. You can keep that, thank.
You can give it the.
Um, I I guess. And this is only continuous with the city of Atchison. Because I I guess my mind keeps going down to the. The, the earlier we was discussing that. Develop that that was wanting some access to roads down south. Which was actually. Wasn't that influenced by there within the three miles of the city and so.
No, it's outside of three. Oh, which when you talk about. Oh, it's a Denver Hills thing?
Well, no, the uh, the one that uh. What's her name?
Louise, yeah.
No, Louise. See, and and so that would be. To me like a road that would or would be development that would be. I it it is influenced by the city of Atchison. Because of the being within the three miles, but it's, they don't show up here. So that's kind of where my. Brain is going like I would think that that would have been maybe something that.
Well, I think this has to be contiguous with the city or.
And then that's, and that's what it's, that's what it says, you know.
Okay.
Uh it's provided, it it's to all cities. You know, sometimes cities have planned urban developments in the works five or ten years down the road. And they have to do this with every city, even if you're one that is not having that. You know, so they're just trying to. Trying to help, you know.
Okay.
So and then also Eric, and what you're talking about. Uh on our road plans and stuff, we kind of addressed the other part about. The uh housing or. You know, like with with the problem we had where we have certain rules now that have to be followed. We just need to make sure we get those to. The planning commission and everybody so they understand them.
Yeah, I I just thought for. Like maybe exits off of seventy-three highway and stuff like that, that maybe that would have showed, but if it has to be continuous with the the best. We do go ahead and approve it.
That's what it looks like.
But you see what I'm saying though there?
That the other issue, maybe we need to have a session where maybe you, maybe you and like Roger go to the planning commission and have kind of an educational. Moment to kind of explain the connection with some of these. Drive wages and all that. It's a separate mess, but seems like it's more about an awareness than anything else.
Right.
Yeah, and especially with when seemed like. We're the last to get everything. Everything's been done and then we find out because. So it'd be nice to.
Yeah.
Too, yeah.
Okay.
I've got a problem with this. Yeah, it's interesting. So were there any changes that the city?
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard anything. This is just a resolution.
Only as far as the roads like.
No, I I don't know yet because they haven't, they haven't, they haven't done that yet, that part of it. They just signed the resolution that they're going to.
Okay.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the urban area boundary approval resolution to establish urban. Area boundary lines. This is from the city of Atchison, whereas the above stated city. Is required to determine and submit for approval the location of the urban area boundary lines for said city. Be it therefore resolved that in compliance with this requirement and in cooperation with the local county officials. This signed document accompanied by a signed copy of the map. Of said city indicating the proposed location of the urban area boundary lines is hereby submitted for review and approval. This was adopted on the nineteenth day of August twenty twenty-four in Atchison, Kansas by all five city commissioners. Um, do I have a motion to allow the chair to sign as the appropriate county official in support of this?
Yeah, I would second that question.
Have you made, are you gonna make the motion or?
Oh, oh, sorry, I moved. I'll make the motion, sorry.
And I'll second.
And then you know, you're good.
Just a question for later than Mary now. When they determine where these gray lines will will be. Did they follow just section lines in some cases or some?
Well, it's it states that, it states it's in this. Uh let's see.
What could fund this?
I saw it someplace.
Oh, roads, rivers, roads, boundaries. Okay, so they did use related resources. I guess.
There's actually some that was gray that is now outside of the.
Well, see the, the. The dotted orange is where it's gonna be.
Yeah, but like here, there's some that was gray.
Right.
Been in is now with outside of.
I noticed that's why I was wondering. So then I see that this.
To straighten maybe just for.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
That's the area we were talking about up there by. Brookdale where we were talking about and the road that goes out.
Oh.
And it and that's that area up there.
Okay.
The road that goes up to.
And then they, they should send that in to.
That's right.
To functional classification. Kevin Coaster, if you need me to send you the. The uh. His address and everything. Alright, so does anybody have any questions for me or of anything?
I have a question um on our logs. We're still logging all of the roads that we're working on, right? Do we have a log of two sixty-second for gravel and blading?
Yes.
When we were talking earlier about logs, that triggered my mind. I had someone.
We did that last week and it did not go over.
Okay.
It needed bladed and we've bladed it, but it did not go over.
Because we put new rock on.
Well.
The concerns I've gotten is.
The size of the rock.
Yeah, and then we're blading it off.
So.
I was like, well, we have logs of everything, so.
Yeah, so there was a couple of reasons why we bladed it needed. And we're not blading the rock off the road. It'll be at the side of the road. There was a spot where rock shouldn't have been put. And there was concern on the size of the rock. So it's uh supposed to be inch and a half crush and run is what we put on it, so. Uh.
And that wasn't what was on?
Yes.
Oh.
They just thought it was a lot bigger than that.
Okay.
If that's, is that what you were talking about? Did somebody come talk to you?
I just was asking why we're putting rock on the roads and then blading it off. And I was like, well, we keep logs so we can look to see like if we did that.
So the hill, when you go past the underpass. Going up that hill. Uh was washboarding and one of the guys thought that if you put rock on it, that would solve the problem. That does not solve the problem. That just compacts or makes the problem worse. So we, I had them blade it. And uh the road, the rock will be put back on the road, but it didn't need to be there. And that's, that's the only way you have to, when you have the washboard and it's from. Deceleration going down the hill with the big trucks and acceleration going up the hill with the big trucks. And you have to take your uh. Scare fire on the front and you have to take those out, physically take those out. And if you do that on those hills, we're supposed to be using AB three. So. Because it's got more lime than not, but the roads are so dusty right now and dry. We are not blading anything. We are fixing ditches. Uh if we do, it makes it so bad that if somebody goes by, it could take. Fifteen seconds for you to be, even be able to think about pulling out at an intersection. So we're on hold except for fixing ditches on the, but that is a good question. That happened and uh.
So we're using AB three or one and a half inch?
Well, if you are going up a hill like that, you should be using AB three. And we kind of, and we kind of, we kind of, it kind of just depends upon where we're at on the road and what we use. Uh something we're trying to do. Is uh. The best we can. Keep it even between our rock quarries. On our money because the price is just. A little bit different. So as far as money spent in a year, I don't wanna spend all of it. There's like fifty cents difference. But I think we need to be closer than than what we have been. I don't know how you guys feel about it. This year I am actually gonna send out a bid for twenty twenty-five.
I was gonna say, I think the cheapest, as long as it's available is probably the best.
I don't know.
Well, a yeah, a big thing is where, where it's at and availability about getting in and out too. I mean, cause that can easily wipe out fifty cents a ton. You know, if if it's.
Well, and if you send out a bid, maybe we'll get a better price.
Yeah, because something, something has to happen. I don't think that we're gonna get a huge difference.
But it's also the type of rock and all that, so.
Right, so so like one quarry has AB three, the other one doesn't. So when we get AB three, it comes from the other quarry.
Yeah.
You know, and the other one doesn't, so.
We ask the other quarry if they're willing to match the price. That way at least we're hauling the same price drop everywhere. I mean, cause I'm all about fairness, but like also we need to be.
Purchase thing. You can have two vendors. I mean, you could actually say it makes sense to have. Somebody broke down or whatever, you just get a.
Well, yeah, but I did.
A ton.
So so one, one quarry will have better rip wrap than the other quarry. Price is gonna be completely different, but it's consistent. You know what you're getting and it's not.
Right.
Just chunks and the other one may have better AB three than the other one. Or if you need a uh three and a half inch crush and run for something, one quarry may have it, the other one may not have it.
Well, placement makes sense too.
Right, so, but like if you're.
Like, okay, fifty cents might make more.
Yeah, so if I'm, if I'm over here.
Hundred percent.
If I'm over here and it saves me forty-five minutes going through town.
Hundred percent.
Then.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so and that's why, and that's why I try to, well, I try to. Keep the business locally as, as good as we can. I mean, we can't make everything perfect, but it's always been if you're kind of, if you're going south of town in that way. You go over here. If you're going north in that way, and it would be nice to be able to use ham, but uh. Uh had a discussion with him last year and we need to sit down. Uh the quality um isn't as, isn't as good as the other two quarries.
Have we used any of the Jefferson County quarry on Moonee Creek Road?
No, uh. They've maybe we're speaking out here and I believe they're a little bit higher, but then you go in and you have to weigh your own and run the equipment and load it and do all that.
Okay.
Well, that's how part of one of our other quarries used to be down here.
Mm-hmm.
On the south end was the same way.
Well, on the west.
Well, I think you go in and you call and you have to do several different things and. And I believe they were higher when we checked at that time than the other quarries.
Um is there any more word about there was talk about a quarry up by St. Louis Church?
I haven't heard any more.
And then also one out about county line north of Larkenburg.
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I would really love to see that one out there.
Well, that would, that would help quite a bit.
Are they opening the holders quarry?
Truck all of that rock.
Yeah.
Uh to the western end, I mean, it it just.
You'd be able to cover a lot more ground.
Yes, you could keep your trucks out there and just haul them.
Yeah.
Was that in Atchison County? It was looking to come.
I believe so. It's gonna be north.
Was that gonna be a midstates or a?
I I didn't hear who, but it was just talking about one and I'm not even for sure exactly where. I just know it was. North of the county line road. So it could have been even in Jackson County, but right on the border.
It's a core of engineers been taking rock up down there.
Well, uh, the project's been for the Corps of Engineers, but it's uh wet rock. It's been mining down there.
Yeah.
This has been, this has been doing it. They've been hauling a lot out. They got a lot out of it. Uh. But that's, that's what happened, Casey. That's what happens, so. Uh anything else? As soon as, soon as we uh get through these. Uh and then we'll start the bid on the culverts for the. Replacing them. We'll get through these and I think that the swap meeting is really close on. Getting ready to bid that out.
So the culverts, uh once we pick whoever it is. So you'll have those delivered here. Or do they deliver them to the site?
Well, hopefully, depending upon how fast this goes. That we can get some of those delivered to the site when they need them.
Okay, just.
Because some of those, some of those are, yeah, and see, we have several on hand. I've already went out. And uh last Monday. Rod and I went out. We sorted everything we had for that project, painted it all for the project, so our culverts are sitting there. What we have for the project. What we have for the project, ready to go. And they're small enough, we can haul those.
Okay.
But the the great big ones, I would like to try to get it site specific, have it delivered and that we don't have to mess with.
You're right. Any part of it. Ask him what's, yeah.
And then I'm still working on the bridge on Vinnie Road. Uh, I've got a bid coming back from Husker Steel, but I have an idea that I'm gonna talk to. A engineer about. And then, one of the guys who put in the bid for just the concrete structures, I talked to him yesterday about setting box. Culverts that come in sections. And see if that's feasible for any of these bridges that we have coming up, they also have bridge kits. Uh, there's a lot of different things, but it would probably be us trying to get them put in. So, I wanna make sure we can do that before.
Um. But we have. Have reservations on that, because I know and you you said you were involved with the one on Lincoln Road that. Million bolts standing in water, um, it. Uh, it might look cheaper on one part of it, but you know, is it a. You know, there's gonna be, there's a lot of different things there that really may make it not worth.
No, I understand it, but at some point, we've gotta figure out some way that we can afford to start replacing these.
Right, I mean.
And that's why I'm looking, I'm looking at every option I can. And affordability is, and whether we can do it or not is the key.
Yeah.
You know, but I just want you to know that I am still trying to figure out what we can do. Go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, if, do we have a county po, like I know we're gonna talk about the purchasing policy, but on the local vendors, like. I guess no wording or anything on that, I'm just, I'm thinking like this is a good example, because there's other examples in other departments of maybe we need to. Come up with some type of.
Well, see, and that's, you know, we discussed some of this last week, you know, uh. We wanna, I wanna include them all, I wanna give them the options where they can to do the work.
Mm hmm.
Uh. But they're like the procurement policy, there are a lot of different things that can be. That can be done differently, and I guess I'm gonna go ahead and say this, if you don't have a problem. I sent you guys an email, I didn't wanna pay what the advertisement cost was.
I liked that.
I thought that was ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
For one day.
Mm hmm.
For one day.
And the quality of.
Well, and and we don't have the read like we had when it was actually a daily globe forty years ago. It's something that people, they get it and they just chuck it, or they look at a couple of things, I don't think it's, I don't. Nothing against them, I don't want anybody to think I have anything against them, but I don't think it helps us reach the people we need to reach. And part of it, I know, is probably informing the community, but if we do it through our website. I think we're way ahead than than spending that kind of money. To me, that just was a lot of money.
The way you're targeting the local contractors in the county with your specific email opportunities. Um, and the blasts that go out when you post and it goes right to them, like to me, you can't get better than that. Because, you know, even for the contractors that aren't going to our website every day to look at opportunities, it's going right to their inbox, like.
Yeah, and then.
And then they have the opportunity if they want it, and if not, well.
Did you find out if you do the email receipts, you know they're getting it?
We will, but we haven't done anything since, but here's, here's another thing, like, one of them emailed me a bit. All right, so I sent an email back, I didn't look at it, I said, you need to have this delivered. To the courthouse. Because we can't take that bid, and he showed up yesterday, well. What's, is is email that bad, I mean, or do we have to keep doing the?
Both of mine came through email today.
Yep, and I think you handled it very well, like first, this is the first one we, and you haven't opened it yet, and this is the first one.
And trust us that we're not gonna look at them and give the other person an upper hand.
Well, and vendors are probably using the right read receipt too, cause that tells you like, oh.
I confirmed during the.
Yeah.
I confirm, we received it, it hasn't been opened, it will not be opened until this day, and.
There's checks.
Well, all their information gets sent through an email.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
So like the one where they sent the second bid. He could have waited, got the second addendum, and then just emailed his bid instead of. Van postage, trying to make sure it gets there, cause he was out of town for the weekend and he couldn't have it here yesterday by five. So those are some of the obstacles that. Yeah.
You're cutting down expenses now.
Yes, you know, so, uh. Yeah, I think there's, there's some stuff that could be changed.
That I highlighted.
Okay, and I'm ahead of myself, so.
Yes, and I printed it and stuck it in an envelope and sealed the envelope, but I was the only one who seen it. Yeah. So that kind of.
So whenever we get.
It's all of the, you know, just be floating around or.
Yeah, I do not open them up, they show up. But, that's something we can talk about a little bit, but that's.
So, when you get it and. You you don't actually open the email, but you can send a.
It's in it, it's in a PDF. The bid will be in the PDF.
So it'll know that if you open the PDF.
Then you're gonna be able to see the bid. So you'll get a letter stating, here's our, see attached, here's our bid for blah, 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 don't open the PDF.
Okay.
And then I just send them back an email stating it has to be delivered in a sealed. Envelope to courthouse by five o'clock on October seventh. Twenty twenty four, and that's what they did, but no, I do not open the PDF.
Well, if we can verify that that we received it and it's marked like it's stamped, like when you get one in your office, I'm I'm okay with it, but unless. Because we need to protect ourselves with, you know, by, but it should probably be sent to.
To the clerk.
To the clerk. The clerk's office to be able, even though it's email, it ought to be in one clearinghouse, so we don't have a bid. Coming by email to the bridge and one to the clerk and, you know, one to the commission, cause I think we have had. Past, we had something sent to the commissioners. Well, that's been years ago.
The RFP explicitly will say where it goes, if they don't get it there, it's.
Yeah. And I was being nice to the guy the other day, you know, hey, you need to look at the bid documents, this is.
Well, you never know, maybe guy who opens it, there's somebody else involved in the business and they just say, send this in, and you know, but so just.
Well, and then, this was explained to me also, some of these on this. They bid to general contractors, so they're used to sending it to an email. Because the general contractor is the one sending the official bid. So that was, that was brought up to me, he said, hey, normally, we don't bid these independently, and he said, I want, I wanted to, because if you guys have business, I'd like to get your business. But it was that they normally would go to a big contractor and then they would.
So without.
Yeah. So.
Which are you planning on sending that, an email to our local contractors, to let them know that it's gotta be K dot qualified?
We're gonna, we we need to.
Yeah, just to give them a heads up, so if they.
Yes.
But that needs to go out under our. The kind of commissioners have decided, blah, blah, blah.
Well, it's in the, it was in the requirements of the.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So I mean, how do, do you wanna do it differently or?
No, I think that just giving them a heads up, like so that they are aware.
I wish the K dot had a. Uh, process where to be, you know, certified or qualified or it's called. It seems like it's like one big hammer, it seems like there should be like certified light, so to speak.
So, so this is, this is something that I'm trying to work with Gabe on. To these big projects, so anything that's big. It, they go by K dot specs, the bridges and the roads and all that they do. All right, so let's try to figure out something that when we have local projects that has. Quantity of materials and it has all this stuff, but it's. Condensed to one or two pages instead of fifteen pages.
Yeah.
Because I don't even wanna read it. Who who does?
Right.
Nobody.
No one, so if we can, so instead of pushing our local guys away, because they open up this document, they go. Uh, I'm not even interested, and they didn't even look at it, so that's something that I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
To get it to where.
I like that, because it it opens up to a lot more.
You know, like the K dot compaction, most everybody, and it'll, it'll say what type, it's a sheep's foot, you know, and you. Work your sheep's foot out of the ground, you know, stuff like that is simple, but. Uh, anything we can do to help them, because we need them. In our community, so. Well, I will, we're picking up your time. Thank you very much, and like I said, we'll, we're gonna go over those and look at them really close and see. Kind of varied on how the game ends, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up. Next up is Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, Sales Tax Question Discussion, Future Planning, Purchase Order, ARPA Funds to Project Concern and ARPA.
Okay, so I guess firstly in the sales tax, I sent you guys an email about feedback I heard. On potential ballot questions for the sales tax. You know, it wasn't too many examples, but there was a couple. Um, and then there was a correspondence from a bond counsel. Um, a public finance office. That said they'd be more than happy to help um, in the. Verbiage of a valid question, if you prefer, um, a lot of. Or all of the feedback I received. Um, said you should consult with an attorney, a county counselor. Uh, bond counsel, some sort of legal representative to make sure your question is. Written to how you wanna convey it, that there's not loopholes, that there's not, um. Uh, any language in there that you don't approve of, so.
I think based on how the sales, the valid question for the jail. Later was found to have issues, that that's wise advice that we. Let's get it right the first time, especially probably the under trying to help promote this, I'll make sure we've got it right.
No, absolutely.
Oh, yes, that's money well spent to get all your ducks in a row and then you're not having to fight it on the backside.
Yeah.
Well, you know, like your role in January. Is it pretty, I mean, I would assume they would. It's not something other state representatives look down upon, right, when you're trying to just put something on the ballot to allow.
No.
The citizens to vote.
Little bit of exposure I've had to this, it seems like. When there's local initiatives like this or any number of things, it seems like it's usually. Kind of routine, that's like, unless, unless it's totally out of bounds, there's statutes bringing like how much you can do and all that, but. As long as you're inside the guardrails, I think they're like, it's your issue, it's your ballot question.
That's awesome.
Let's get it right and move it on, yeah.
Yeah, cause I don't feel like.
The ones which I've seen last few years, where they they really started cracking down, things have to have sunset.
Yep.
You gotta define it, you gotta, other than that. You know, there's, no, that's not how much you can tax and stuff.
I think sunsets are good too, cause it gives the public an opportunity to see, did it do what we thought it would, and then you can extend it if you feel like it's.
Are they managing that?
Yeah.
Correctly, or is it, did it generate too much money and now they are spending it willy nilly on on this?
Yes.
Yeah, so if if, yeah, I think it's.
So I think there's two, two things to discuss here in the big picture, where is the. Current countywide sales tax on the uh, sports complex. And it's gonna be sunsetting, and so, I guess. In the political world, decisions you make, okay, this, who's gonna be in charge of sports complex, it's still gonna be county, is it? All that we need to talk about, and also, is it gonna try to renew that tax, it will, not that with sunset, is there something in deference, or maybe the timing of this would be. When that ends, this one starts. I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions as far as the public's got to. Be willing to support this and. Otherwise we're wasting our time, and so, it's pretty seamless if you just keep the tax the same and it actually just changes to a different, different use. But then what happens to sports complex if it needs improvements down the road, so I think there's a few timing things that maybe. A group of people need to gather and just kinda discuss that out and figure out what makes sense, so.
That's interesting, cause see, I see it as standalone to help us with the budget.
Oh, I do too.
Like, like EMS is.
Just be aware of the other thing coming, cause.
Oh, yeah.
Public said, well, we're already paying this and that, watch, you know, I'm just thinking.
Especially if it just be like a year off, is it?
Yeah, that would.
Definitely have, I think have a better feel for the public, it's like one's going off and now we're being, and okay, we're, it's sunsetting. And so you don't have a overlap of a year or something, well, they couldn't even wait, you know, a year on it, I I I. See, I think the.
Just just be aware of the timing.
Yeah, I think be conscious of that, and and maybe when you get into it, maybe it would be, oh yeah, this is a no brainer, we wanna do it now. But I don't think we rush into those decisions.
I do think EMS is a great idea, uh, Donovan County did, it's working well there.
So, that'll be another thing here of, if we go for half cent. Well, that's not gonna take care of it completely, so you'll have. It'll be dedicated for EMS, but then you'll still have to have.
Right.
Uh, ad valorem to make up the difference.
Well.
I mean, it wouldn't, you, I I don't think that we're looking. To raise it a full cent or whatever to pay for the whole thing, are we, or are we talking about? Like a. Oh, it's to supplement. Or to maybe take the bulk of of EMS.
Yeah.
And then still have to have. Some ad valorem to to make up the difference.
Well, from the constituents that I've listened to and even from our budget hearing that night, when they were giving us feedback on a sales tax versus property tax, it's like. If you're gonna go through the motions of getting something on the ballot. It has to make sense for the people, right, like it has to make sense that I'm gonna go up and say, yes, I'm gonna pay more when I. Buy things in our county to fund this, and then I'm going to see something favorable. When it comes to ad valorem taxes, you know, and and vice versa, when you talk about. Our county and the demographics and all the people here that aren't paying ad valorem taxes, whether they're students or. Renters or, you know, all those folks that are still shopping, and we take care of them with EMS, right, so it it kind of. Goes full circle and makes sense, but it just has to make sense. When you put the numbers down, and so, I'm excited to dive into what that looks like, um. You know, cause we know what our EMS budget is for twenty twenty five, and we know we don't have any capital outlay. Included in that, we know that we had six hundred and sixty six thousand of cash, like all of those things, so. If we're gonna do something, it better make a positive impact on the backend or it's not worth. It's not worth the time, cause then we're paying, we're still paying property taxes, you know, and our bills are going up, but we're paying a sales tax, like none of that's gonna be good, like it has to make sense, so. Anyway.
Better, good time to maybe have an update on sales tax collections.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
So.
Um, well, with that. You've just kinda set me up for what I wanna talk about, so.
Sorry.
Great minds.
Fine, yep, so.
I announced he was running this, and then we kind of got in the weeds, so.
I I swear that.
That's okay, um, so yeah, based on this conversation, I put together. Um, some numbers that this kind of feeds into.
Oh, okay.
So based on the current sales tax collections, this is all subject to change.
Yeah, sure, this later on.
Nope, you're gonna have it right now.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
So at a quarter, half, three quarter and one cent sales tax, that's the estimated amount to bring in. Um, so, as you can see, the, the twenty twenty five EMS and rescue budget is just a little over two million. They still. Are on track to bring in six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. So there's a question about what to do with that revenue. Um, that revenue has to go back into the general fund by statute. So that typically offsets the EMS budget now. And it it still would um, in the future. Um, but. So this is where your breakdown of how much sales tax percentage you would want. You can see like if you take half a cent, plus the projected six fifty of revenue.
That's good.
Is pretty close to your budget, or if you want a little extra. Maybe you go three quarter cent. And then plan for capital improvement plan, or maybe there's other departments you wanna rope into this, I I don't know, but that's for you guys to figure out. Um, however, I went a step further, so the bottom portion shows you if we would have had. Any of these sales tax for our twenty twenty five budget, whether it's a quarter clear up to a full percent. The one percent, three quarter and half. Would still be under R and R. R and R was forty nine point two six one. R and R was forty-nine point two six one. We proposed fifty-four point seven four. The quarter, three quarter and half is all under R and R. Keeping the budget how it is, just using sales tax to offset. Or to pay for EMS and rescue essentially. The only one where you're still above R and R is the quarter cent sales tax. It only generates about six hundred and sixty thousand, that's not quite enough to, you know, cover the budget, of course. Um, so you'd still be up a little bit, but. Based on these. Collection figures, it's all subject to change. This is kind of what you would see if you had this sales tax fund EMS and rescue.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, so in your, what is the intent for this revenue question? Um, when we go through each one of our departments, uh, budget process and meet with them. We never focus solely on EMS's revenues, because those are kind of like your, um. Property tax, like in the treasurer's office that you plug in on the backend, I guess, does. That goes to the general, but not necessarily EMS general, does it? Like, so the sheriff's revenues, like the jail revenues go to the jail. Very like, that's easy to to see when we're going through it, but EMS specifically goes back to the EMS budget.
That's where I code it from.
I didn't think so.
I don't think so, the sheriff steps.
Right.
The sheriff's revenue, but I didn't think that.
EMS is always over, so there's not very anything to code it back to essentially, anyway.
Yeah. Uh, but I don't think that that was, and I think that you, I don't know how this would look, cuz if you went with three quarter. Dedicated, I'm assuming this is a dedicated tax, so, but then it would look like. If the revenue they were generating went to. The general, it would look like.
It has to go to the general.
So, but what I'm saying is that.
EMS budget. Like, that's my thing.
It's, it's the same thing.
I know exactly what you're saying.
It's gonna look like we're taking sales tax dollar money, but we're gonna be profiting the general account because of the revenue coming in.
No, because it's like what we're doing now with, um. Our current sales tax, those are segregated funds, right? I mean, they they come back for communications and for solid waste.
But we don't have other revenue, we don't have the revenue coming.
But they can, they can charge.
Well, but but that would be. Um.
We could do the same thing with this, where we give a minimum for EMS, it'd be a separate fund.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess what we're looking at, the revenues, EMS revenues, you have a a general umbrella, right, with. Road and Bridge and EMS and HR and Clerk and all these. My understanding was that EMS revenue went to the general, which is the umbrella. That just helped us offset the mill, and I think that's what you're trying to say.
Correct, but it's still allocated to EMS.
Okay.
So the two million, in the state's mind, it's not really two million, it's two million minus whatever's collected from revenue for EMS.
Okay, so.
It's still in the general, so it's six and one half dozen of the other.
No, absolutely, so that's interesting, though, that way to explain to the public of. We need to make sure that that revenue we're generating in in EMS. Is talked about when we're doing our our budget.
So it don't look like we're profiting by, we were promised a uh dedicated tax, but yet. The general is taking this revenue.
Right, no.
And we're paying for everything out of the sales tax dollars, you know, just so so we don't have that. Mistake, or it looks like a mistake.
No, I know what you're saying, but to make an impact with the sales tax, what else would be. Applicable, that could be, you know what I mean, that would, I mean, EMS is an easy one, because it's countywide, like. You're taking care of people.
So storm sirens. It's countywide.
But that's joint communications, correct?
No, secondly, emergency management.
Yeah, it could be emergency, this could be emergency management, and EMS could be funded with this, that might be a good angle, because that truly is countywide.
Which his twenty twenty five budget is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred, basically, but I know that after his first. Year of meetings with, there's a lot more he needs to do in the county that could increase. Um. Okay, so.
There's probably a portion of IT that can be considered, anyway, supports all this.
I feel, I kind of think that if you throw too much into it, though, it will confuse.
Yeah.
People. And then that opens up to interpretation of how how much do you delegate percentage wide to go back to IT then? And then how much?
But the wording, it's also, the wording is such that. Those costs associated with countywide services.
And it's easy to understand.
Yeah, keep it simple, and 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 that would not include like, you know, sheriff or in bridge and all that, cuz that could be real complicated and hurry and confuse everybody, but.
But. So, I asked, I asked him for this this morning, are we thinking of a ten year sunset, or what?
I think that's.
I think that's the, that's the most you can go, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think you do the five or seven or whatever number, I'm not sure, but I think tens of bags, I think.
And and honestly, I wouldn't be opposed to a five, just to see what it looks like, but sometimes. By the time you wait a year and you don't start collecting, you're almost a five, and you don't really have a good handle on on what it's doing for you. So if you did a ten, um. Corey did update his EMS ten year replacement. Plan, and when talking about these numbers in his twenty twenty five budget. The two million one twenty-six has nothing in it for capital. So, I'm just going back to making an impact.
They bought the step or money.
Right.
Yeah.
Here's, here's what I think you look at too, if you have the spending authority, the tax has been passed. Then you have the ability to bond or borrow. Let's say they went build a whole new building or something. But you know, you can do that, if you can cash flow it, am I saying that right? Based on your taxes, or if it had been authorized. You don't have that, it's kind of a different animal, so, so I mean, I think it's the core of the capital plan, I mean, that's just a matter of, you know, we're gonna need a new ambulance in. Twenty-nine, or we're gonna need a new ambulance in nineteen thirty-three, and then you just plan those with your.
Nineteen thirty-three?
And thirty-three, and two thousand thirty-three.
Okay, so.
When nineteen thirty-three ambulance, that'd be interesting.
But the one, so three quarter cent, let's use that as an example to walk through what you gave us, okay? So the three quarter cent would be basically one million nine hundred and eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're generating that in sales tax to offset the. And I need to do these numbers, two million. One twenty-six, one oh two. Minus one million nine eighty. So we're offsetting it, and only a hundred and forty-six of that. Is in our general. But we're still, I'm just sorry, I have to talk this out loud, but, and you're showing a mill reduction. Does that count the fact that we were putting in almost seven hundred thousand of?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
So, how did you back that out?
You just have to take it out of these numbers.
Okay. So, that also helps that seven hundred thousand dollar cash difference, and how does that? Because you're looking at it as the six sixty-six went right to EMS, okay? Like we did with Rowan Bridge two years ago, okay, sorry, I just wanna. Talk through it, because again, it has to make a positive impact, otherwise.
What's the point?
What's the point? Um. So. But the one point nine wouldn't cover the budget and have room for growth or capital in the future.
Correct.
Which again. I feel like you you would want, um.
That could be made, but the the one could be too much.
No, I know, that's why, yeah, it's like.
I think you go over half, you know, sort of push half percent, I think.
We can't go tense, cities can go tense, but counties have to go quarter cent.
Yeah.
Informants.
Well, but to your point, so, and how you were comparing it to the other quarter, if we did three quarters. And then in two years, the quarter dropped off, then you'd be at the half.
Yeah. The question is, do you go another year before putting it in, so, depends on how you put the ballot together, the votes to do it, I don't know if you can do that or not, but this year, let's say, what in twenty-five?
I think that's what.
We're starting twenty-seven, I don't know, so twenty-six, I'm just, I'm wondering.
I think the sooner the better, I mean, because.
We're trying to time the timing with the other.
Also, if you done it at the primary instead of in the general election. Then you would have time for that tax to start on January first, because we went with the later election.
Correct.
It started in eighth quarter, which is gonna be harder to budget around.
Yeah, sales tax.
As long as you know you can budget, it's just a matter of knowing when it's gonna start.
Well, yeah, I see, we won't know, even with the other one, we won't have our budget done. In time for primary, I mean, we'll have to have it done, something cooked.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and that, that's where it's gonna come down to letting the public know, like, here's the deal. Like, cuz next year, I'm telling you, we're gonna be sitting in these seats looking at twenty twenty-six budget without the six hundred and sixty-six thousand. With increases in these mills, there's no bailout, right? So we're gonna be like, here's, here's the deal, your taxes are going up. And here's a solution that we have. And then you choose where, I mean, we gotta fund it somewhere, so where do you wanna fund it from? You wanna fund it? In purchases or property tax?
Yeah.
I mean, because.
You have to, you're gonna have to figure out. It, how are you gonna convey that with the public? How are you gonna have that conversation with them so that they know and understand?
Hundred percent.
And we are limited, I, there's a lot of rules around how much. As a government agency, we can campaign or whatever, so we can do information, but really can't do advocacy, there's a lot of fine lines.
Well, and I agree, I don't think we should be advocating one way information, I mean, because even that last countywide sales tax, I think both. The city and county got out of control trying to advocate one way or another, and it's like, no, here's the information, you go out and make your own choice, like, it's. Just giving information. And I mean, it, it is what it is, we've lived it this year. Like, room full of people, like, telling them, like, we don't have enough.
I think one is to help us out, one is that the other tax will be coming off, the other thing is the state, the big push this year is gonna be property tax reduction, so from the state level. So hopefully that'll happen, that's gonna be, who knows what happened, but hopefully it does go down, which will help us. And as as taxpayers, and so.
But not the people, not that, I mean, the county level where we're sending out our notices.
Right, no, I'm saying, but at the county level, yeah, cuz a lot of the things are gone that used to help.
Well, I think we would doom it as if they thought that. Hey, we're gonna pass this, and the ad valorem would still go up. Six mills, you know.
And that, that's a fair concern.
Yeah.
And that's the problem, we can't, like, that can't hap, like, we have to.
Yeah.
Get it right.
So in the ballot language, do you include that, saying that this will be, reduce the impact of property tax, and they will, they still have a cap on. What those increases can be, and how how far do you take that? I don't know. That's a decision to make.
We would know June first if we have a primary.
June first.
June first, well, actually the second, because that's Monday.
Okay.
That's the deadline for.
So, but that's not. If there is enough. Is there a guaranteed primary?
If we should not have that.
But if we wanted to have an election there, and there was no other primary, then would that cost?
Because, but, yeah, it would, when it was in a different entity, landing for now's numbers isn't gonna be where we are in the next.
If we're doing a sales tax for ten me, ten year sunset.
So you kind of wanna know how much is in future expenses to know how much, um.
Well, because that's all information for the public too, right? Like, here's.
Well, what's coming out, though?
And when you sit with the folks doing the job and see the age of the population going up, the call volumes going up, like. We gotta be forward thinking of.
Well, we could.
And how many are not paid? That's a huge factor.
Yeah, and then like ambulances, you know, it's like people think. Three hundred thousand or three hundred fifty thousand, oh my god, but that's what they cost, and we're gonna need.
Well.
So many of them.
In four years, there, there's a remount for two hundred and fifty thousand, so like.
Yeah.
He has it spelled out based on what's happening.
Well, if he does a restructuring with this growth in calls and has to add. An additional ambulance, and crew, even if it's just a. A part of that twelve hours, you have done that in point four hour, and still, that's a big cost.
That's why I think. Having all the information. To ensure that when we choose which one we're gonna do.
Can you move this guy from, um. Raymond James before?
No, no. Um, I did visit with him on the phone, he was very, uh, light and easy to talk to. Um, I don't know what their fee schedule is at all. But I'm sure that there would be something, of course, to help with the. The services of writing it up.
Probably, if we decide to go this route, with, you know, probably get an RFP, maybe actually do. Or select a board council to help write it. And, yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Keep it fair.
Well. Probably ask for experience working with revisers, office, and helping draft language and all that.
Which. Doctor Epple was supposed to have an update, he was working with the advisor, and we might have. The ability to do it ourselves at the county level, up to one cent. Which would be awesome, without legislative approval.
Thank you, stuff to improve. And they changed it a couple years ago, I'm pretty sure you stuff to get some guy rubber stamp, but maybe it does go through the body as far as much, it goes through some committee or something, I think. I'm, and later this week, that's some stuff already I can ask.
Well. I think we can go to one percent, but it's a, it would be a countywide retailer's sales tax and not dedicated, so it'd be shared. Revenue.
Oh, I see.
Without legislative action.
Oh, okay.
So I, I have a question on that, how does that work when? As I know what we did with the last countywide sales tax and how that got moved to dedicated. But when you have the wording that it goes to emergency services. How do you not, right? But how do you not do that?
Yeah.
Um. Does that make sense? Like.
Yeah. How, how do you, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. The way.
When you put the verbiage on there, how can you not put it toward that budget?
Well, share up those emergency services. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so I think you have to make it sure it's really well defined.
Well, yeah, even like, uh, joint communications, well, then the definition of communications with computers just changed, and. See, down the road, and you can say, well, this was the intent, but yet, as definitions have changed, it still fits.
That turned into batteries or no batteries on. I mean, so, I think we need to. Hopefully, like, invest if it's well defined, so I think.
Actually, it's county EMS.
EMS slash rescue.
Yeah. Which that's how the plan.
Well, I, I think the answer is that if, even if you have that language in your ballot question and you're enacting resolutions. Uh, that's going to bind the county on how to spend our share of the money, but would not necessarily bind any of the other municipalities. The cities on what they do with their share, they, they, and that, that was. Essentially the problem with the earlier sales tax.
Okay, so the sales tax would still be apportioned regardless of what the language was.
Right, unless we get legislative approval to have a dedicated sales tax.
Yeah.
Which are def, if you did not do, if you did not have the legislative approval, then that would really dip into these. Buckets here, because like that, three quarter cent of one point nine eight, county isn't gonna get one point nine eight, you know.
Percent of the.
It's gotta be dedicated, or it's not gonna help.
Right.
Yeah. So that's a must.
It's good perspective.
But I still think the timeline should be as soon as possible. To get the voters enough, the ability to say yes or no. Not waiting for the sports complex.
Sports complex could even come off sooner, if we look at Monday's bill that probably we're talking about, you know.
We had a town hall and it was pretty apparent they wanted to go all the way to twenty twenty seven.
Well, they wanted to use the money for as many approvals as they could, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I feel like sure is happening.
So that comes off in one.
I thought it was twenty seven.
Thank you, right.
Okay, so what additional information do we need before we can lean toward? I mean, because, so. We need to have our ducks in a row of knowing before working with, like, ready to draft. Correct? I mean, I'm just trying to walk through this process.
They're gonna ask you, well, what is it gonna fund? What do you want? What's your intent of it? What's all the departments in it? How do you wanna write it? How much money do you think you need?
All of it.
Well, but that's the thing of. I mean, Corey cut a hundred thousand out of his budget this year. For a short term thing, he's mentioned he could use three more people with the number of call volumes going up. Like, ARPA is no longer, like, we loved ARPA to help him get a little head up, but like.
We definitely have the departments sitting in pretty good shape now.
But, but looking at his twenty twenty five number, knowing that's not as where it should be, right? So.
Yeah. And I think they're pretty frugal out there, and they use their resources. Bring it, take care of their equipment, so. That's huge. I, I mean, I think we have enough to put an RFP together, I think we should get someone lined up to start asking all the other questions.
Yeah, and they're gonna have bullet points of what they're gonna need from you.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't just use our gen- the gentleman that we always use? Is that what you're saying? You wanna do an RFP for other legal counsel?
Yeah, for. We put most everything up for, you know, we can still choose him.
Yeah, I just, since I've been here, he's been the one, Atterbury's been the one that helped us through all of our.
They, they're good.
He's helped us with the ro- the road bond and the sales tax and he's.
Well, it may be worth it, and maybe we're contacting them saying, is there even a charge to help do this, cause it may not be, I don't know. Maybe he's kept it our council, he'll do it no charge. Maybe that's worth the first phone call.
Okay, I can talk to him.
Cause they're, he's already gonna have a lot of information.
And he gives us good information.
Maybe somebody else in their firm, I mean, that actually does this, so. I'm okay with that, but it's gonna be a charge, it's worth writing an RFP. I do a question for you, Mark.
Okay.
So your numbers appear like the different ones, percentages are slightly different than down below, as if.
Yeah, um, so that is taken into account, um. So you lose your tax, you lose that form tax, you lose the amount of that you have to rebate.
I thought it was would make sure.
So I guess essentially you get more back, cause you don't have to rebate as much. Be looking at it that way.
Okay, so on these also, these are just projections, so.
It could be lesser, higher.
Correct, so. And we're only thinking of EMS for the sales tax, but as far as these mill levies. If other departments were to have increases.
Right, it would.
So, again, going back to making sure that we have enough to make an impact, we need to be mindful of that.
Yeah.
With the amount of cases going up and crime and all the things that affect us in our budget season.
This is just the numbers as they were this year for twenty five's budget, that doesn't mean there's road and bridge increases or election increases or.
You know, maybe, maybe the thing to do is to do some projections that show a. Three percent increase in all the other budgets, just as a. Benchmark to kinda say, if this would happen, we still have this effect and.
Right, like you're planning for increases, so here's a.
Yeah, but inflation. Also materials, and maybe things will level out, but. And whether that number's two percent or three percent or five percent, whatever it is, maybe do a couple scenarios. Once you set the spreadsheet, it's not that big. Have some variations, this is that way we're projecting to people, hey, here's some possibilities with. Best information we have right now.
Right, cause that could change that, um, half cent drastically by that, you may not be where that is.
And also, if you can take a trend, trend line on the sales tax collections, like the city's got a good record of losing the, uh, that we have the county record for years too. Might say if it's, there's a trend line, then project what it will probably be, you know. I think that would be helpful too, cause that may offset that other.
Right.
As well.
Right.
Both sides of the balance sheet gets the same impact. That's just part of the informational pieces, but might help by council to trying to help us.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it would.
And the other thing I think we need is, yeah, Corey maybe sit down and do a little harder analysis of the next five to ten years of.
Well, that's what I asked him, cause he had mentioned he had his, um, replacement plan, I'll forward it to you, I asked him.
Let me get that.
Well, I asked him for it this morning. I'm gonna forward it to you guys.
The other piece I would throw in there is, there's, was some talk about doing a, uh, building over there to house. A lot of the other rescue equipment stuff eventually. So we're looking at a ten year plan. They may wanna include that maybe in the out years. At some point, just so, so at least we're, at least it's in the list of possibilities, so we're not surprised if anybody, if they never do it, they never do it.
Um, he has those in there.
Okay, good.
He has, uh, replacement of EMS station two in twenty thirty four, some refurbished and remodeled EMS. Stations in twenty twenty eight.
Okay.
So.
Cause they live there twenty four seven, it's gonna, it'll probably need some updating.
Install a garage door on EMS station one to facilitate faster response time.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he's got it all thought through.
I know he's talked about those things, it's yours, yeah, okay, that's great.
But I think all of these numbers. When you're doing your projections, having this included is huge. Because again, my fear is you pass enough to cover, and then you didn't think about your needs, and then you have needs. And then you're paying a sales tax, your property tax is increasing, and it's like, who the heck is running this thing, like?
Yeah.
Just wanted to be a good outcome.
Some things come to mind like big kids, but who are insurances? That money that was spent on that for insurance, it covers. Those vehicles and buildings could come out of this tax. Cause things like that could also impact our, our budget.
Util, yeah.
Yeah.
Cost allocate appropriately, which that's that department that it's paid, cause that's gonna help us on the other side.
Right, and Bob said this morning that he can run that by department. We would, we would know without me having to figure anything, he has it already.
Exactly, so I think those are kinda the kinda things we'll really take a hard look at.
Make sure everything's encompassed in what it can pay for.
Yeah. Does road and bridge do their, um, driveway and everything, snow and ice removal? At EMS? Yeah, so.
And we go there, we go to Evignam.
Yeah, that, that's, those are all those things that add up, and so I think you'll allocate those.
Mowing.
Which means if, if they pay, actually, they actually pay.
Right, right.
I mean, I think there's ways to make sure you get everything in that bucket you can, because you got one shot here to get it.
Well, what was that thing that Ronin Bridge did, um? With solid waste.
Oh, the asphalt work out there at the.
So, everything to the gate, we're responsible for, and everything behind the gate, we're responsible for. That's what the commissioners decided.
Yeah.
Cause I had to do a little work that I wanted to. But it, but it worked out good, now we have it. This is what it is. To the gate, now there's no, there's no, what am I supposed to do, or, or whatever, now, when it comes time to. Treat salt and sand, if we need to, we'll go down in there.
Yeah.
You know, but as far as, uh, the upkeep of the road, yeah, to the gate, so we get the approach to the scale and the road. I hate being rude.
Casey, I wanna hear you this, just as something I, we talked about earlier.
I asked her about a mutual invoice, but I didn't get one.
So, but.
I know.
Okay, so timeline wise, you're gonna talk to Atterbury and have it up for us next week. And we, and then you'll have maybe a projection. Of which way we should lean next week to make the biggest.
CIP, yeah.
Okay, and the CIP is ten years, so we'll do it in your sunset. Sound good?
Shut to. There's gotta be, maybe with this week, that's the legislative stuff, you're gonna probably have to leave out where we're at on this, or we've done that yet, so I need to talk to him some.
Yeah, he should have an answer from the reviser, he didn't think by our meeting today, but he, I talked to him yesterday, and he's gonna have something. I won't be here next week either, I have to, I got asked to speak at the Kansas Hospital Association again, and I forgot about that.
How about the twenty second?
Fifteenth, I, it's at ten forty five in Pika, so I won't be here next week.
Okay.
And Rebus is gone the twenty second.
Okay.
Is, that's what I have in my calendar.
So, next week I have, I have flights in the afternoon, so I may be scooting out at noon this year, so.
Nine thirty five.
Next week?
On the twenty ninth, eleven forty five.
So, next, next week I'm here till.
Okay.
But if Casey's gone next week.
Yeah.
So then, well, I guess we'll just have to adjourn early. So I can't be the only commissioner here.
Well, next week I'm here for, I'll be here most immediately.
I have a webinar from Chang Bank next week.
Our feelings are the best.
If we need to, we can note, not the meeting, well, adjourn it maybe.
We may have to.
If you, if Casey will be gone and, and Mr. Rebus, you have to like.
See, you might have to come up with a hard time that we wanna.
They've changed my flight, like, six times.
Okay.
I'm gonna see where it's at now.
I'll just send an email to the commissioners with my thoughts.
Thank you.
And you guys can review it when you have time.
I think once we have his capital plan implemented in. I don't think we'll need emergency management, I think EMS is gonna be enough to give us the impact we want.
Plus I get one thirty five or ten, that's eleven thirty five, so my flight. They had moved my flight, I started out at like a three o'clock, and I keep. Don't have a flight in New Orleans, from Kansas, just drive, I'm learning, this is twice I've gone through this.
Wow.
I don't know what the deal is, um, yeah, I have to, I, I'm. Maybe I can't be here. Any ideas, guys, uh, it's gonna be tough for you to be here next.
I mean, I would have to be here for like thirty minutes, and I'm just gonna drive to Pika.
Well, we're gonna have to cancel, maybe then?
Do anything on the agenda?
For, um, the fifteenth? Then a greater training.
I'll be in the harvest.
Yeah.
Mode any.
And then, Mr. Henderson, the Senior Village Aging Report for.
We'll tell the agenda for next week.
You just, yeah, that's what she said.
She just told us, like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With Joe. And, um, Senior Village Aging Report for, um, the accounts collections.
And then the bid. Wait, wait another week, I guess.
I don't think that will slow down their process.
So Monday's Columbus Day.
Maybe it's your recommendation today.
Did we have like a one hour meeting that day? Casey, what about Monday? Columbus Day, the training day, what if we just had like a one hour?
I can't on Monday, my kid, we don't have school on that day.
Okay, you go for a short meeting, we can slip in, it's about, be done.
Yeah. Which, those two things, I mean. Could do the next, yeah, I mean, Senior Village isn't gonna be.
I don't have to be here for that, that's, that's, I'm okay with that. Sit here, ready, glad as you can, drink as you can.
That'll give Pat more time anyway, to review it more.
And you guys could decide on the COVID biz, that's all I'm proud of that.
Yeah, whatever.
So they just cancel next week, I guess that's. I got, that's a bunch, I just quit looking, cause it kept moving.
Well, the next meeting will be the twenty second.
Okay, wanna? Move on to the next topic?
Sure.
Okay, um, a purchase order to subject concern for one hundred thousand dollars even, paying out of the ARPA funds. If there's. Allocation for twenty twenty five.
And look for a motion to approve the purchase order out of ARPA for project concern, twenty twenty five county appropriation. And the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, so I have a motion to approve. Moved and seconded all those in favor, say aye.
Okay, so. ARPA update. Sent you guys a, a bulleted list, um, September twenty seventh. Guess, a little while ago, about where we kinda stand, um. The jail was being taken care of, I don't know about. Well, let's just do what we've know.
So one second, I'm gonna pull that email up real quick, I got it. Okay, sorry, I, I wanted to get it in front of me.
Sure, so the Lloyd Group, we know is gonna be expensed. That's the consulting services, then we have the jail, that will be expensed out for the graphic panel upgrade. The land purchase, where are we at with that? I think it's been. I thought the review period was a hundred and eighty days. Uh, from the agreement date, I don't know if the agreement date was March twenty one or April second, or maybe it was after that.
Third.
Yeah, we're, we're at the end of that review period, the, uh, um. Jackie Prujant was out of the country, I think, when they were, when. O'Keefe Wilson was trying to set up the closing, but, uh, we're, a- as soon as she's back, I think we're ready for. Ready to close.
Awesome. Maybe the end of the month, maybe? I don't know, just trying to get this.
Uh, yeah, yes, I would think so, yes.
Okay, um, I'm working with emergency management on that ID, uh, card machine. I just got the invoice for the rest of the land surveying today. On the two thousand fourteen dollars, um. The AEDs, Corey has ordered. The AEDs, Corey has ordered them, just waiting on the invoice. We approved the hundred thousand today for project concern. Working on the two hundred and forty thousand for the payroll offset. Um, I. There's some additional paperwork with that. So when we apply ARPA funds to something like that, it just requires a little bit more. You have to back it up as to why, and you have to prove like figures. So we're getting all that together. To have it for the federal government.
That means, we use the Lloyd Group, we need.
Yeah, yeah, um. And then, we have about fifty-seven thousand left for the courts renovation. I don't, and that's the invoices that we've paid. I know you guys met with Brian earlier. Um, and it sounds like work's being done, we just don't have the invoices for it. So I don't know how much of that is truly remaining until we get an invoice.
You probably should have drilled that home with him.
I sent an email to him earlier.
Okay, good.
Saying I.
Okay.
To know.
Okay.
Um, so then there's two questions that I don't really know where we stand. Um, we've kind of talked about it, but not really approved anything, is these thirty-three thousand for the sheriff outfitting two patrol cars. Um, and then the AC unit for the jail. We had a presentation and a quote from a gentleman, but we never approved it, so.
Brian told me recently that there may be another option there, he's getting some estimates on. It may be less, so he just, then that was just Paul talked briefly, so I don't know where that stands.
That's interesting, cause.
Yeah.
When we talked about options, we talked about a twenty-five year old unit and that was the time to.
But I think, I think he did a little exploring and found something out, so I don't know, actually it was last week here, I was talking to him, so. Maybe we can still drag him back in here and find out.
Yeah, that might be.
Might be worth.
Do you want me to go see?
That's fine, I'll text you.
I don't want them to have to do that.
Oh, I, 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 it's fine, um, there's, with those things, there's four thousand eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents not allocated. Um, that is from the GIS and appraiser printer upgrade, that isn't gonna happen, um, so. That could be applied somewhere else. Maybe the jail cars are a little bit more and you wanna apply it there or more towards the courthouse renovation or the courts. But we are getting down in money and time, so.
So. On the court, are we relying, is all of that coming from Brian?
I believe so.
All of that, okay, so we have to make sure we stay on top of that and get. It sounds. Has he ever had, like even temporary things like to plug in, like he said, the air AC units are on order, they're not here. Maybe we're to get that.
Coming out of the fifty-seven.
And make sure that we kind of plug in, even if they're not quite accurate, but at least we'll know about where we're at.
Be ordered, I mean, should have a purchase order, which then if we do the purchase order, it allows you to pay it out. So, okay.
But hopefully my email will bear some fruit as to some of that.
Well, and.
I sent it to him and sending, so.
Good questions for us, though, to make sure that, cause we didn't explain that to him. Like, hey, you have your notepad, what you're deducting, but we need those purcha, like, we need the receipts of your purchases.
And even if it's something that you have ordered, we haven't seen it, give us that figure, so you have something to plug in.
So should we ask him to come back in and then give us an update on the air, in the air conditioner?
I'm gonna use restroom, have a quick break.
Yeah, if you wanna run down against, send me down. Sure, I pass, I can just make a move, exactly, then vote on it. No one asked me. You're right. Joe, I'm hoping I can mix and room just eat out and.
Well, something I almost forgot to talk to everybody about is uh, the concern, one of the hike programs over. And the concern when the bill, when he's gone, that some of the KDA officials have on where we're gonna get. New money to, uh, money to supply all the grant programs if they're, if they'll even still have them.
Yes, I think there's always gonna be an infrastructure bill of some sort, but you know.
Yeah, I know that's, I talked to somebody at the main conference, and that was a concern.
Well, they're sitting on a surplus down there and that's, that's, that aside maybe for. You know, I think there's, there's a need for some advocacy for these rural areas that have more demand on, I mean, look at the difference in. The three or four counties right through here versus out west as far as bridges and. Infrastructure, maybe they already waited that in their programming, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just, you know, a lot of them are figuring out ways how to. Solve it themselves, but then, you know, when you're short, when you could have five more people to keep all the equipment running all the time. That sounds great, but then it affects your whole budget for the whole department, you know, you need not just on.
Yeah, and you need grant funding to get some programs started, employs people, and then the grant funding runs out. Then they're always gonna have the program, so then we have to pay for it.
Right.
And that's happened countless times with, been in states of. I'm not hearing back, so if you wanna call him or something, that's fine.
Yeah.
This phone could be suicide or something.
Hey, it's Casey, sorry to bug you, but um, we are on a topic of ARPA updates and then add a few more questions for you, do you mind coming back in?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, perfect, that's great, thank you, bye. He'll be here in five minutes.
Sure, see you at the jail.
Yeah.
That's what I wondered. I think he's hard to get a hold of in the jail. He's doing time. You know, I wonder if Brian ever did, you could give him credit for all the time he's been in there working.
Last Friday, I did that tour of the Lansing Prison, did you see the little more historical societies putting on something?
I've been in there, I've been low, that's high school.
Oh, okay.
High school baseball. Went over and played between the prisons.
Really, it was pretty cool.
Okay.
They used to do that, and they wore just, they said, we'll steal your hats. And so the coach got us all the older hats or whatever, and so, you know, at the beginning, they said, when you all say cans and say good games, it's August, if we don't get even, they'll snatch your hats, it's kind of a right thing. So, we just love to take our hats. You figured it today, too, this school across the state line to the state prison, I think it's fun. We didn't see the whole thing, though, we just had to show us one area and we had the name, so. That'd be interesting, yeah.
It was frustrating, I mean, to see the wasteful spending, like. You go in and they literally had prisoners there four years ago, and you see it. And like, we're walking around the grounds and there is a hospital. Like, a fifty-bed hospital with a plaque that was just built in twenty-ten, just like walked away from. And here I'm sitting up here thinking of like all the mental health needs and like how there's crisis stabilization centers, but yet there's a fifty-bed hospital in a, like.
Sleep, so.
Yeah, why can't we?
Right.
Start utilizing some of those things to alleviate, it's just. That, it's frustrating to me, and the gentleman that gave our, our tour, um, was a past warden. And, and so, it was very interesting, and so I started asking those questions, I was like. This seems like bad decisions, like, and he was hot to trot, because he said that, I was like, when did they start planning to build a new prison? Because twenty-ten wasn't that long ago for this new hospital that's built in here for fifty beds, and um. He was frustrated, cause he said, they said the reason they were gonna do the new facility was it would take the warden's budget from like forty-two million and cut it in half. And he's like, there's no way, but they've built the new one, but I just thought it was super interesting.
So they don't use the old one at all? See, I thought they were gonna still use it somewhere. Okay.
I mean, it was cool, I mean, we didn't get to go in all the places.
Or, or you.
Yeah, but it was, it was really neat.
I've been federal and down there, I worked there for two weeks.
I, I hope when they get the new one built, that they would do tours of that one, I bet it'd be.
Well, they've changed the security levels, I think they're starting to use it. I hear it's medium security. Yeah, and also we had to a week in the clinic, I did it twice.
I'm, I'm good, thank you, I don't think I'd wanna.
That's their state level, the feds way. Where the kingpins are.
I got a friend that, she's a dentist, and she moved out to Norton, way out there. They've got a pri, they've got a prisoner, and she was, the town already had two dentists, but she went to work at the prison, and she said she loved it. I'm going like, weren't you a little intimidated with that? She goes, no. Just said enough security around her, she didn't have to worry about it.
Yeah. It was, it didn't bother me at all. Been on Brian's.
Yeah, he said he'd be on in five minutes. So, shouldn't be long. Pat, since you're on remote, do you wanna go ahead and give any updates you have?
Yeah, I don't think I really have anything to report, um, but Casey, as a, as an aside, you'd be glad to know that. The Norton facility used to be a state hospital, and then they turned it into a prison.
Really?
Yeah, it was, I, I was born in Norton, it was a state hospital at that time, and then probably during the. The late eighties, maybe, they turned it into a, a prison when they closed.
You would probably like that tour, um, because, I mean, it was pretty interesting, and they said they've given tours to other people from around the state that are like. This is better than our county hospital, and yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's neat. Hi, Brian. Um, so we were just going through our ARPA forecasted expenses and um, realized, like, you had that list this morning that you had ordered things. Do you have invoices for those, so we can go ahead and get it off of our radar?
Uh, it is, those invoices have started coming to Mark, uh, one. One that is uh, for the air conditioner just came today, maybe Mark, on that, uh.
And how much is that one?
Uh, that one was, let's see here, nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two, twenty-four. And then I've got one for four thousand seven hundred and seventy-sixty-nine. Which is uh, wiring, and then one thousand thirty dollars and ninety-four cents, which is uh. Hangers, stuff for the uh, bathroom, bathroom, uh, grab bars and all that to make the handicap bathroom. And then I've got one for nineteen ninety-nine, uh, I don't know what.
Nineteen dollars?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that's wall plates.
They, so when I order from HD, instead of just my, my total price when I ordered. That's, they give me that, but they won't bill me that way. As soon as something gets shipped, then they send that bill to me. And it's, it's just kinda crazy that you have to, you know, sit there and keep track of all that, but. There should just be one figure of that coming out of there, but. It'll, this, you'll have one more bill from HD, and I don't know the total of that, but it's like three ninety-seven, which would bring the total up to the, on the four thousand.
Plumbing fixtures to step in.
What's that?
Plumbing fixtures.
I've got all my plumbing fixtures, I've got my electrical wire minus uh, three rolls that are being, they backordered for some reason, been shipped. So I've got electrical, I've got my AC, I've got my bathroom stuff, everything for the bathroom. Uh, I've got uh, one more that's gonna come from eight thousand seven hundred and thirteen. From J and L drywall, that'll be studs, uh, plaster and uh, sheet rock drywall. And uh, then I've got one for right at five thousand for the little windows that go in up there. That, to speak to, when the pass through windows, and I haven't got that ordered yet, but as soon as I can, that, that should order. They should be able to place that order this week. J and L, I could place today.
Perfect.
I just haven't, because.
Yep.
I've been watching everything else to see where I'm at. We got another one for carpet, that would be twenty thousand is what the carpet is. I'm trying to figure out how much carpet I can save up there, and how much we really have to do, you know? How much carpet do they need? Some places are gonna have to have it.
And are they calling the shots for the priorities up there?
Uh, somewhat, I mean, they can call, they can call all they want, but the priority has to be a certain direction for me, too.
Right.
So I have to start on the bathroom, and then I have to get, to do anything else, I have to really get the small courtroom. So we give them one, two, and then if they wanted to jump around on three and four, fine, they can, but. I think they'll just go three and four, which would be getting the judge's office ready, and then moving them over to that.
So where does that put us?
About eight thousand left.
Eight thousand left, and once you purchase twenty thousand of carpet.
Yeah, and there'll be, there'll be some labor that uh, for that, and maybe, maybe a little bit of electrical, we don't know. But that was what I was gonna ask you, we talked about a little bit for the electrical boxes. We're tangling with one of them up there, should that be separate from the courts and run to that, or should I use that eight for that to put? Get rid of one of them old boxes, but in the new one.
The one who's all them down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I need one, I need one for more power up there. I've got a breaker box that's in a wall that's getting tore out, so I gotta move all that, but.
That's been two or three grand.
You know, so yeah, so if I do that, do I do that separate, or do I keep it right in here, you know?
I've bought carpet recently, but that seems like a lot of my.
A lot of carpet up there, too.
Yeah.
Commercial carpet squares, too.
And it's, I guess I never paid attention before.
That's such pricing.
I've looked hard to try and beat that. The only way I beat it is with roll carpet, and I beat it a lot with roll carpet.
Yeah, but those carpet squares are so much better.
Oh, the window you added that in.
Yeah.
But back to your question on the electrical, uh, is there a room in your courthouse, maybe it's budget for part of that?
Might be, might be.
Because part of that's kind of a courthouse.
Yeah, I know, and that's why I say, it's one of those to fight back and forth.
Maybe you split it because they need more power, so.
We'll see, I'll get uh, some time with Mark this week, and we'll hash that out and see where I'm at, yes.
Well, and we still have the four thousand eighty-four, we're doing electrical, that could go toward.
It could.
Toward that.
That'd be a good place to.
Because electrical updates are very important.
Well, I think that.
I think that's more important than the carpet, is having the electrical be safe.
I agree, I agree on that.
Right, that car, you know, the carpet tile is really handy, cause you can switch out pieces if you have a problem. Would that be better, maybe in certain parts, but this.
That's what I, that's, uh, believe me, it's all going through my head, so you got a judge's office, how much traffic's in there? Rolling, uh, you got a courtroom, a lot of traffic, less square.
Yeah.
And then, you know, so yeah, that stuff's going through my head the whole time, so uh, just trying to get it all done. You know, we were gonna do just a little bit for that fifty-three, and now we're, you know, really stretching it out to.
Yeah.
Make it, uh. So yeah.
Switching gears.
There'll be a door on there too, Mark, that hasn't been older yet.
The air conditioner for the unit for the jail? Or the sheriff's department?
I am still waiting on one bid for that, so.
To replace the air conditioner?
Yes, they've asked for more time, because they want to do something that might change the whole scope of everything, so we've got two bids for trains.
Who wants to do something different? He wants to change something that'll change the whole scope.
As some, a different, a different system.
So then how do we compare apples to apples? So then how do we compare apples to apples when we've got bids that we're changing?
That would be, that would be where you'd have to put it out for bid at that time to say. But I mean, uh, I'm only taking their word for what they're doing, you know? Uh, we didn't put nothing into the, you know, we'd have to get an engineer to draw up something over there and then off with that to make a bid.
To replace an air conditioner?
Well, if you're gonna put it out, if you're gonna scope it for bid, like and change things.
It does want an air conditioner. It's complicated over there.
If, if they wanted to do.
Where do we come up with the one hundred and seventy-seven thousand four eighty-six?
Do something again.
With an air conditioner replacement quote, right?
Yeah, to replace that unit. And we've also got another one from, uh, Hill to do, not Hill. Uh, thing and Alan, uh, King to do that too.
And was it, what was that?
Two bids for, for that. And they're right. They're both fairly close.
Right in that ballpark. Okay. Does that have to be paid for?
For train is gonna limit you. Anything train, uh, they're gonna, you're gonna have to put a train. But he was talking about maybe pulling the train out, putting a different type in. I will let him, he, I told him, I said, get a bid, get a pride. We'll come to the commission. You can explain yourself. You can tell why you think it's good if, uh, you know, that's, then he can explain it to you. But he was supposed to have somebody up here. I'll get ahold of him next week and see where, where they're at on that.
I feel like that's getting messy.
What's that?
Well, just, we got a bid for a replacement of an air conditioner. We got another bid for the same air conditioner. And now we have a third company that's redesigning everything.
And he, yeah, he'll bid the train too, but he said, man, if you get, his explanation to me was if you get rid of the train, anybody can work on it. If you keep with the train, you're gonna have to have a train guy come up and train parts and.
So it'd probably be good for him to give us the same quote as these two, so we have apples, apples. And then if he has a different suggestion.
Idea. He will explain why he's doing that to you guys.
And he'll come when?
I don't know. I will.
Can we get him on the agenda for like three weeks?
I will call him and find out. He put the same system in for me at some fire department.
It shouldn't be that one. Three weeks, we're all here, the twenty-ninth. Can you have him here on the twenty-ninth?
I'll make sure. Uh, he put the same system in down at the fire station. And that's what he's kinda saying, you know, if you guys would come down and me and Jack went down and looked at it, it's kind of impressive.
Did the fire station used to have a train?
I don't know if it was train, but it was the same type of unit that, uh, that V A V boxes. But, uh, I will get him in here to explain because I don't do him any justice. But if you listen to him, you'd understand what, uh, is going on there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hey, twelve thirty, Taylor Lee Extension Council with a quarterly update. Hi, guys. You guys can pull chairs up here.
Yeah.
Um, to be, yeah, under the microphone is awesome.
Sorry for my attire in my program. We're in late, so that's why I'm in athletic gear.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We have John Bishop from our board as well.
Hi, John. How are you?
Wonderful.
All right. So I think the last time we met was in July. Um, we've, we got through our busiest um, time of the year, our big event, which is the county fair. We had over thirteen hundred exhibits from youth that came to the fair. Um, and that excludes all of the open class exhibits we had from community members as well. Um, our implementation of our fair entry system, which was, um, it was agreed upon by fair board and the extension board to purchase the software and implement it for this county fair and it was successful. I feel like we had enough training opportunities for families and for superintendents and anybody else who was a stakeholder in the fair. Um, I feel like it went over as well as it could have the first year, so. Right now, we are busy trying to find program development committee members. Um, so if you look at the extension update, we have a list from each district of the vacancies for each committee that we have. Um, so there's four different committees, Ag and Natural Resources, Family and Community or Family and Consumer Science, Community Vitality and 4H Youth and Development. Each of those committees has six members on them totaling twenty-four. And out of those twenty-four members, um, our board gets elected. So, um, it's very important, um, with the people that we find to apply for these positions. Um, that they're well-knowledge and that they kinda understand our mission. And so from District One, we are looking for, and I feel like that's the district we have the hardest time finding people in because of it's in the city limits. We're still trying to expose people to what extension is and what we do. Um, so we're looking for three different members from District One. We're, um, looking for someone to fill the committee role for Ag and Natural Resources, Community Vitality and 4H Youth and Development. District Two, we're looking for someone to fill a position for Family and Consumer Science and then District Three, Family and Consumer Sciences and Community Vitality.
May I ask you a question?
Please.
Um, so I'm District Three and are these volunteer positions?
They are.
Okay. And then the commitment, can you tell me a little bit about that? And then I'll also would love you to explain what you're looking for for my district, like Family and Consumer Science, like what are the well knowledge? What are you looking for? And same with Community Vitality, so I can maybe.
So each, so each program area has specific topics that are covered within each of those areas. So, um, so for Family and Consumer Science, we're looking someone that, for someone that has knowledge and health and wellbeing, family resources. Um, even those typical like family and consumer science skill, um, like home ec teachers or, um, anybody that has experience with youth, um, and then Community Vitality is just someone who has a passion for developing our community, which I feel like could be anybody, so.
So are the courses already there and you teach that course or do you develop your own?
So for these committees, you mean?
Yeah.
So these are, these committees are intended to be advisory boards for us as agents. So we're looking for people that have a knowledge base that can contribute to the programming that we plan to do with each area.
And how the time commitment is?
So it's encouraged by Case State that we meet with our advisory boards twice per year. When I was a single agent, I had joint meetings. So I had a joint meeting with our Community Vitality, um, Program Development Committee and our Family and Consumer Science Program Development Committee, just because I feel like they kinda shared a similar mission. And so, um, we, the data that we looked and the needs that we saw, we noticed that there was a, a large senior population in the county and that our obesity stats were kinda staggering. So, um, they advised me and we kinda planned out that Waukesha would be a good program for our county to kinda address those needs. So now that Clarissa started, she's met with her Ag P D C one time and we've met multiple times with our 4H P D C. So it gives, since we're, we're only one person, um, those six committee members are kind of seeing what the needs are in the county and bringing what they think the needs are back to us so that we can talk as a group and see where we can address those needs.
Okay.
So the
Good info.
The time commitment, like I said, it's, we have elections in November. And we'll be posting on our Facebook and advertising through radio, um, when that election date is. And, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought.
You're fine.
And then we, um, will have our annual meeting in December. And at our annual meeting is when those twenty-four new members get together and we decide who our extension board members are going to be.
Who's on the board? How about your board?
Our big, our board, um, consists of nine members.
So they stay on the committee and they're on the board?
Right.
Okay.
So the, so out of those twenty-four members, we find out who is willing from those twenty-four members to be on the board. And then say there's twelve out of the twenty-four who are willing to be on the extension board, um, those get voted.
Question for you. It's District One, it's Manchester Commission District, right?
Right, correct.
So District One, all, all three districts have part of the city of Ashson in it. And it seems like that's a big pool of the whole city, but when you just go down to one district, it's, it's a little bit tougher, you know, depending on what party down you're entering around.
Yeah. And this is just the system that Case State has set up, so.
How do you reach out to folks in each district to try to recruit or whatever, find interest levels? Is it worth it, Matt?
What?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, Alan, if you know somebody in, in the District One, who, you know, maybe is, well, Larry Busing was on committee and he's dropped off.
Okay.
But he doesn't, he doesn't farm per se.
Right.
But he has an ag, he owns.
Yeah.
Has agriculture interests. Charlie Perdue is also representing. So if you know of anybody, I couldn't think of anybody offhand who.
Well, and even if I was throwing him out here and put him on the spot, Jeff Shealy, who's got a history with Ag.
Right.
But even if he can't do it, he might say, oh, wait, so it's, you know, so it's almost like a networking thing to me.
Right, I mean, yeah, that's why I threw it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. I'm with you. So I've got a couple of calls. I think a couple of folks might.
Yeah, I, I did recruit one person to serve on the, uh,
Community Vitality.
Community Vitality.
For, for one.
So I, I, huh, yeah, I'm the other person in District One that represents it. So.
So that's, that's one of the things we're working on is trying to find these committee members. A lot of it is word of mouth. Um, we collaborated with the board last night to try to come up with a list of possible applicants and
Nice.
Um, hopefully we'll have some luck. Um, so then I, the reason I'm wearing sweats is I just started my, uh, Stay Strong, Stay Healthy program today, which is a program for adults over the age of sixty to help, um, it's a strength building program, um, to hopefully help reduce the risk of falling, disease, help with fraility. A lot of older adults are um, kinda sedentary. They don't move around a lot. And so this is helping them potentially stay out of nursing homes and be able to function independently. Um, so I, I had a lot of interest. I, I was advised by um, a specialist at Case State to cap it at eight participants this first time. So I have eight. Um, and then in the future, I'll offer it throughout the county, but I'll have twelve to fifteen participants each time I do it.
And where do you do that?
So it's at Trinity Place. The reason I did it at Trinity Place in Ashson was because there are residents that live there. And so since we're coming up on quarter months, I didn't want older adults to have to drive. I thought it would help with participation. So we're doing it there. We have three residents and then five people from other places that are coming in for it, so.
That's awesome. Those are really good reasons to choose that too, going anywhere.
So then Clarissa gets the fun of doing everything I did when I first started, all the trainings in Manhattan and orientation. So she can talk a little bit.
Since fair ended, I've been very busy, uh, with my agent training. I spent a week in Manhattan doing my new agent orientation. So I've been very busy the last two months on doing that. But prior to that, since the last time we talked, I did have three or host three programs. I had a livestock showmanship clinic where I had people in the community come and bring their animals that they were showing at the county fair so that you get one-on-one help on how to show their animals correctly for the fair. Uh, also giving good advice on how to get your animals trained and ready for the showmanship aspect of fair. Then I had a fun meet a horse event where I teamed up with the Kansas Horse Council. And it was kind of a come and go event. I had five people in the community bring their personal horses. And overall, just viewing the people who come and, uh, came and went, I would say there was roughly fifty to eighty people there. So it was a very successful event. And then I did have a horsemanship clinic planned in June, but we got rained out, so that got pushed to August. I had, unfortunately, numbers dropped moving to August because of the heat. I did have several of our kids who ride the horses in the county fair come and I had really good feedback on that. A lot of them were very excited to be able to show what they learned at the clinic at the county fair. So I feel like there was a, it was a well-received program. Uh, the last few months, especially with harvest, I've been getting a lot of forage quality where I've been going in and taking forage samples from hay and silage, so I could send that off to the state to get quality. Uh, pinpoint and analysis on it. I've also been doing quite a bit of soil tests to check soil health out for a lot of them have been local gardeners in the community. So I've actually been seeing the city a little more, so that was very nice. I do have a livestock judging clinic scheduled for this Saturday. And what livestock judging is, is the kids will come in and learn the aspects of the industry, what they're looking for in the animals, how they're bred, how they're built, structure and confirmation. And then they'll learn how to publicly speak the way they place the classes. There are plenty of studies done by Texas A and M, Oklahoma State, I don't know if Case State's done one, that livestock judging not only enhances you as an industry, as someone in the industry or a producer, but it also enhances your real life experience such as being able to think on a dime, being able to public speak. I was the horse judging coach. It's a little different, but I do think bringing that to the county will be very beneficial for our kids and I'm very excited to get it started. So we'll be hosting our first clinic this Saturday and hopefully can develop a team for our 4H youth going forward. So that's kind of what I've been busy doing.
Busy?
Yeah.
That's really good participation on that. Fifty to eighty?
Yep.
Wow.
I know John stopped by. It was, there was a lot of people there, so you can see a picture of one of the horses that was there with one of the community members fresh in it. So it was, it was a hit event.
And to your point about the August one, I've heard a lot of feedback that it was scheduling conflicts. That's why people didn't come to the, like the August one because I think you're drumming up interest. I mean, people are interested and word is traveling of how good the program is and I mean, I've, I know for, for me too, when they were talking about scheduling, like that was our problem. Cuz our kids were interested in it of going and learning, but.
I know in June, I think I had like twelve people signed up for it and then came August. It was eight, but then only four showed up cuz it was hot that day. So it's just something that, you know, I also started in April, so there was only so much time to actually get it. So maybe next year it can be in May or something where it's a little cooler and we haven't quite gotten those rains yet that we get in late May, early June. So.
I don't know how it works, but is there any way that schools like partner with your programs where like I remember when our kids were at, um, Ashson Elementary, um, Laura uh, Hanky would bring in like the milking truck to, so that like you have masses of children, right? Participating in things that they wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity. I don't know if schools partner with extension or not.
Yeah, they could.
We actually did a program for the first grade class. What school is it?
It was at AES.
Um, the Soybean Association approached us on putting on this program on how beans make bacon. And it was essentially, you know, what, why do you feed soybeans to pigs and then you eat pigs? And so we went through like, what's a carbohydrate? What's a protein? And so it was, it was a decent program. I think the kids enjoyed it.
That's awesome.
So I'm hearing is eating pork is actually vegan.
So we've just been doing a lot of promotional things, um, attended match day again, um, and then we've been to the farmer's market to promote programs.
Awesome.
Yeah. So here's a, on the backside of that is just a list of our upcoming events. Seems like they're all across the board. We're doing strength training for older adults and we're doing community health fairs and 4H events coming up, um, but this is what our next month and a half looks like.
Nice.
Is Michelle helping with your elections again, Asher?
She is. We haven't talked about what capacity, but.
I did more on guidance.
Right.
Because my intent was to, at the beginning, was to try to help them get past that negativity. And I think we've, we've done that. I think it's, it's very good now. Um, we've got forms, we've got ballots and, and it's something that I can share all of that information with the board. And I've been in contact with one of them. So.
What, what was the negative of just not knowing about it?
No, what, um, I've been helping you guys for what, two years, three years, when you guys took their appropriations down?
Okay.
With all the negativity in the county.
Oh, gotcha.
So.
Well, there was questions on the, how they were conducting the election.
Well, I think, like knowing, like you have to go to the church at this time versus like running it through the clerk's office, right? Is that what you're asking? Well, I think, like, knowing, like, you have to go to the church at this time versus like running it through the clerk's office, right, is that what you're asking?
Well, it, it was uh how they were being counted, if there was people that maybe shouldn't have had. An influence on them or part participating in the county and stuff.
Had the honesty, the integrity of the election, and whether the ballots that were cast were actually counted correctly. And the people were placed in the positions they were voted for, but since we've been. Or since I've been helping with them, it's, it's come a long way, I mean, we had two places, um. Ashson and Lancaster that we had for voting, we do allow early voting at the clerk's office and we have a box.
That's what I thought, and I think that was good feedback of being able to just walk in and.
But I think it was just, most of it was perception, or, or at least what was there was allowed the perception to be. Well, this may not have been done right, or somebody was actually helping that shouldn't have been because they were on the ballot or something like that, so. It all gives, especially in the hyper partisan stuff that's going on nationally. You know, it's like you want everything to be above board and everything, and it's just certain things you can do that. Uh just make sure that the. Process is done correct.
It was very good working with them now. So I will still change any way, shape, form I please, will help out.
I think one of the questions that the board. Has. Is the funding process, you two will be making those decisions for the next four years.
Well.
And how do you envision? Future support for the Extension Council, because the current funding. Direction is going to put it in. Very pinched condition.
So that, I'm glad that you brought that up, because I was actually. Going to ask you um to make sure that you guys got your letter for the twenty twenty-five funding. Um and then. We have. Sorry, I was just doing the math to try to remind myself where, where you guys were at, but um. In the county, we're looking at putting a sales tax on to help with. The property tax um increases, um this year we've made, you know, cuts in several areas. Um so that was one of the things I wanted to learn from you guys. Um you went one sixty-eight, five thirty-four this year, and then dropped down thirty thousand for next year, so tell us. Like what that's going to do to. What's the effect it's gonna have on, on you?
I think. Just time constraints, now that we're fully staffed. We obviously need more money to function and just pay for the three of our salaries, um and then with the cut. We, the programs that we would have intended on doing, we now have to. Take grant writing workshops and figure out different grants that we can apply for to be able to function. Which kind of limits the amount of time we have to make a difference in the county.
So you haven't been. I know you haven't been there long enough, but.
Right.
There hasn't been. Uh. A grant right, or grants pursued because nobody's done it. Wouldn't pay to get grants. I mean, it's. It sounds like, I mean, they weren't. Nobody's went after them because they were doing other things.
Luckily for me, we've had, we've just had the excess of salaries from. Last year when I wasn't employed from Ray's departure, we've kind of been using those cash reserves, but. Using the cash reserves that we have, um like if we stayed at the one thirty-eight, which we. Are at right now, will be, I mean, will potentially go broke within. Two to three years.
Two years.
So what are the grant opportunities that you have within the, does it?
So we, we haven't researched what's available. K-State does um through the Community Vitality programs that they have, they have grant writing workshops. Where leaders from K-State have opportunities that they can. Lead classes on how to write grants and what grants are available, um so we've kind of been researching and delving into that.
So one of the things that we've seen is when we talk about cuts or when we make these cuts, there's repercussions, like. Someone gets wind or, like, my fear here is I need to know what you need to continue to operate. To be fruitful and not say two years extension is broke, because my fear is we do something like this and then. We have people like Clarissa that we've found. Um through. Putting out, you know, job opportunities and, and we bring someone on board and we don't want them looking for something else because. We're saying things like in two years, we're gonna be broke.
Enjoy.
And, and, and if I were in her position, I mean, right, you're gonna be looking because you're like, wait, this is my livelihood, this is a job, so. I just want a clear understanding of what. I mean, because this is great and having the numbers you guys were throwing out, like, that's what mattered, like thirteen hundred exhibits and. Fifty to eighty people per. Per clinic and, and all of the things, um. I guess.
So a lot of the, like. You know, grant writing kind of is more on the science side to not only get data to different organizations, but also bring in money and a lot of it will cover. For example, uh if I want, this is hypothetical, I know they have programs like this in like Missouri, but if I want to host like a series. Where it's like three weekends in a row, we go out and do farm visits for producers to learn how to better operate their cattle. Operations or management or feedlot, a lot of times it's the extension office who might host like a dinner for them when we have to pay in people to come in from Manhattan. So we have to, you know. Have the cost of providing somewhere for them to stay like a hotel, so it's stuff like that and. As we grow the program, you know, and people start accepting us, you know, charging people for dinner might be a thing, but we're not quite at that capacity. Where it's like, oh, this is gonna be a thirty dollar program because it includes dinner. That I feel like that doing where we are right now might lose interest in extension if we are having to operate at that capacity, whereas like, oh, we, you know. We're able to provide snacks or like sandwiches or something, I feel like that might. Bring a little more people in at least in the next year or two while we're still trying to develop what extension is again.
We, we had a discussion last night. Whether we could afford a seven hundred and twenty dollar a year expenditure. For telephone system that Clarissa can explain, but.
So.
But it did get, they were, the numbers they use is not their personal number anyways.
Yeah, so there's a program I've used with previous employment where it's an app you download on your phone, um I know they have different apps, but the app. We used to use was called Ring Central, and when the app is open, it gives you a different number, you can text, call, all that stuff. And that way we aren't out there giving our personal numbers to people who might take advantage of, you know, the eight to five schedule, because. I've been, I've been to a job where people are calling me at eleven o'clock at night and I don't. So I, you know, I made a business plan, I. Gave it to the board for three lines, uh so all three of us, because there's also transfer. Areas, you know, if someone calls Taylor by accident, but they're looking for me, he can transfer them to my line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh you know, it's roughly twenty dollars a line, and that was the base minimum price, and it was like seven hundred twenty a year, so it's stuff like that where we're kind of. We're gonna have to pull back on.
We're trying to make things more formal, which costs. To, to make things more formal, um. And. We're looking at within two years. There's a potential that. The board or whoever will have to decide which agent to keep and which agent will be unemployed.
So that's one of the things I was trying to. Understand if that one sixty-eight, five thirty-four or like a rough number of one seventy is where we're at this year.
Yeah.
And. That would give you. Because the way I see it is like, what you need to operate. And have that as our target, and then you guys continue to apply for grants, and when you get those, it's just a win, right? And that's another conversation of like, hey, got a grant for forty thousand, so we only need one twenty-eight this year, you know, when we're having like more of that.
Yeah, but, but the grants would only essentially supplement a basis. It would give them a chance for additional activity.
Okay, so the grants are.
The grant is not, not necessarily.
So for example.
Thank you, thank you, I didn't understand.
So for example, I could apply hypothetically, I don't know if they do grants anymore, but the Seminole Association in Kansas. Because I want to bring in some type of genetic. Component to our Seminole breeders, a program for them. And let's say it's a five thousand dollar grant and it will cover two months of providing lunches for producers. They'll want numbers back, or they, so they can have statistics of how this program helps the Seminole breeders in our area. However, that five thousand dollars is only allocated to the Seminole programs, wherever, it's kind of like grad school, you know, if.
Yep.
If NIH was writing me a grant to do cancer research, that money can only be provided for those resources for that cancer research. I want to be able to use it for salaries or, you know, maybe Christmas bonus or whatever it is, so.
So the hundred and, I'm gonna use hundred and seventy thousand. Can run programs to where you're doing what you've been doing and have output. Otherwise, your output is sitting in the office trying to find a grant to put on a program, and from the public, they're paying for something that they don't see happening. But right now, it's happening.
Right.
Okay, I, yeah, so.
Is the horsemanship clinic, I'm putting that on for free, because those are skills I have that I can give to the community. That's time and resources on my end, however, you know, Texas, who's one of the second biggest horse producers in the country. They can get funding from like AQHA to do programs like this, to where they have a, it can be a three-day-long clinic, lunches provided, you know. The kids can have belt buckles at the end of it, stuff like that, but. Uh they will only be looking for that program, whereas right now it's more of what we can provide with our current knowledge and our current resources.
Okay.
So.
Interesting.
We'll put in uh. District team take care of a lot of that? Do we get into a district where we can share? Uh agents and then not be. Do two standalone. Uh agents.
It would. It would just be dependent on all, there's, all commissioners would have to be agree, in agreeance, and then. The residents would have to vote for it as well.
But on the flip side, what I've learned from talking to other county commissioners and surrounding counties is. And. I don't want this to come off negative, but you have to have something like this to be. Welcomed in, like, you have to have something to give, right, like, it's not like, hey, Alan, get me on your team, I have nothing to give. Like, you have to have proven track record of like.
Or just trust me, I'll do that.
Yeah, right, it's gotta be like, hey, look what we've here, look what we've done over the past few years to, to be. Partner, yeah, thank you.
I think, I think the district is a, it's a lot bigger. Fish to fry, I mean, there's a lot, lot to that, just getting a lot of collaboration and, I think it's gonna be voted in and. You have your own mill, Evy, right, it would be, so. Yeah, it's not that it can't be done, but that's more of a long-term project and you're gonna tackle it, I think.
Right. Yeah, and, and currently. Gentleman from Brown County. Agent in Brown County came to help Clarissa judge corn, because that wasn't part of her bailiwick.
Yeah.
But then she had to go to Leavenworth. To help with, I can't remember what it was.
Farmer who needed to get his certification, so, and they're out without, they're without an Ag agent, so they called me up to see if I could do it, so I drove out to Leavenworth. For a few hours to help him with his organic grower certification.
Nice.
So.
So again, I mean, there is a, a degree of sharing, but. It's, it's. Yeah, it's, it's depleting the resource.
Yeah.
For here.
To me, you would get, agents get so specialized, you know, everyone has their niche, and so if you have six agents over three or four counties. Are all experts, and then you're sharing them, so.
Right.
Time is the essence, too, right?
But it's uh.
So when looking at twenty twenty-six. Is that one, I mean, the number from this year is what we should. Forecast in order not to lose what we've already built.
I think this, this hundred and sixty-eight.
Five thirty-four, yeah, hundred and seventy thousand roughly.
Has been, that, this has been the third year in a row that that's been the number.
That might.
Yeah, well, the twenty twenty-two, yeah, time flies, yeah.
Yeah.
So what, what is that number?
I, I, well, I think the number we have initially, but I can't remember exactly what it was, one hundred and.
Hundred ninety something.
Right.
So.
That's getting more in line with adjusting.
The cash reserves you had on hand are shrinking, so.
Right.
That's, that's kept you at your funding level, so to speak, if it's needed, but.
Right.
Okay, so it's important to gauge that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, I just think it's important, I mean, being proactive and, that's one of the things when we were talking today about the sales tax that we're. Wanting to put out for people to have the opportunity to vote on. It has to make sense to where it has an impact on all of us, right? Like, you don't want to vote yes for a tax over here and have taxes going up over here, and. We've made cuts over here, but we also don't want to lose things, so we have to keep in mind what we need to be at to sustain. It's just.
Yes. Well. I mean, the taxation rule is very simple. The only good tax is when somebody else pays.
Uh yeah.
Exactly.
And the only good service is when you benefit from.
Right, so, well, and that's why this is a very relevant conversation, I feel like, for.
Right, yeah.
Where we're heading.
You know, if we wanna. Truly keep young, energetic. Young folks to bring things to us. And to engage. They have to be. Sure of where their funds are going to come from. Because clearly they're capable to find other greener pastures.
Mm-hmm, well, we don't want that.
Right.
Well, especially for killers, only I'm over sixty and I'm now frail and falling, so.
Get on his waitlist.
Just figure how bad I needed at eighty-four.
It's over. You done it, Bill. I appreciate y'all coming in, I'm really glad to see both of you.
Yep.
Can you roll your hands, so. Hopefully we can uh improve the funding situation next year.
Yeah, and I love these updates, because this is important too, of just us being in the know, because just like you're, you know, trying to find these. These board members, and if, if we can have anybody top of mind to connect to you, you know, absolutely, I'll start brainstorming for, for my two in my district.
You're.
Welcome, we put that on the county website too, maybe to blast out something, Facebook page.
But if you think of anybody who.
I got a couple in my head here, so. Who should they contact, just emails are on here?
Yes.
Yeah, go through those.
Yeah, we have contacts at the bottom.
Yeah, I saw that one, I got that in my bag.
All right.
Allowed me to have some applications. But somebody who knows me, you can contact me, because I do have some application.
That'd be good, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh we're doing Senior Village next week, we hopped over procurement policy because of time constraints, are we wanting to bring that back? In a later week, or do we wanna?
Um I've got some commitments I need to go to, so, yeah, we can, we can definitely get on the agenda for.
Future weeks.
And I saw you had one marked up pretty good. Um. Honestly, if you want to share that ahead of time with us, so we can kind of be looking at it, that's not a bad idea.
Uh before Joe left, he wanted me to, to tell you that he. Um. Would like to work on his updates and get them to you by next week, so that you guys can review on to that he.
For the pipe?
For the uh.
Procurement.
Of procurement.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, perfect.
Now, what about other department heads, we heard back from everybody else, the ideas? Can we stir that pot a little bit, maybe getting their ideas, and then we can, can maybe collate them and.
I sent, I sent the email out last Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, so no need for executive session today, I would look for a motion to approve this week's expenses.
So move, okay.
Moved a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero, uh public comment. Seeing none, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved a second, and all those in favor say aye, or aye, we adjourn at one oh nine.
This uh, fire strip works a lot better than the turn button.